Are you ready?
All right, everybody, it is 6:00 PM. If you are still in line, stay in line. You can check in, but we will get this meeting rolling. We have a long agenda. If people who are waiting in line can just be quiet so everyone can hear, that would be great. Select Board, are we ready? Clerks, are we ready?
Kristin.
Okay, great. All right, I'm gonna do the gavel. Try not to be too loud. Okay, the 2025 Annual Meeting of the Town of Hopkinton is hereby open. Good evening. My name is Sarah Persino and I am your town moderator. I would like to welcome you all here this evening and thank you for taking time to participate in this process. I will note for the record that this meeting is being recorded. Registered voters who have not checked in with the supervisors of the checklist and who wish to do so should do so now at the supervisor's table. One quick note on the check-in process. As many of you have observed, we did not use the pole pads for check-in at town meeting or at school meeting. I want to underscore that this is not due to a decision made by Hopkinton officials, rather a directive that came from the New Hampshire Secretary of State's office. Their interpretation of the law is that currently towns can use pole pads to check in voters on Election Day, but that the statute does not give explicit permission for communities to use pole pads for deliberative sessions or the business portion of the annual meeting. I am committed to working with state lawmakers to amend this law to permit pole pad use in the future and hopefully make these lines a little shorter for us. I know Hopkinton's representative to the Election Law Committee and recently retired school moderator James Newsom shares this commitment, and I'm not sure if he's made out of the House session yet, but he wanted me to let you all know that he'd really like you to call him on this, like a lot. He loves your phone calls about this. With that explanation out of the way, as a first order of business, I remind you that the exits are located behind me and to my left and that the restrooms are down at the end of the locker room, which is directly behind me. Before we begin, I do want to take a moment to recognize citizens are town lost since we last convened here. Every year I take this stage, the faces in the crowd before me change. Sometimes that change feels monumental. In 2024, Hopkinton lost residents and former two treasured town residents and former town clerks who gave so much of their energy and love to us all, Tom Johnson and Sue Strickford. I suggest that we take a moment now of silence to remember Tom and Sue and all the Hopkinton residents who passed in the past year. Thank you. I also want to take time to recognize that we are on the land which has long served as a site of meeting and exchange among indigenous peoples for thousands of years and is the home of the Western Abenaki people. The town of Hopkinton honors, recognizes, and respects these peoples as the traditional stewards of the lands and waters on which we gather today. In that spirit, today we will begin by acknowledging that we are guests on this land. We need to respect and help protect the lands within our use. I suggest that our agenda this morning will be as follows. We will do the Pledge of Allegiance, the National Anthem, introductions, a special presentation by the Chair of the Select Board. I will have some administrative comments and then we'll move right on to the articles on the warrant. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief Thomas Hennessy and the National Anthem will be sung by Kathy Donahoe. Could you both please come forward? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you can and the National Anthem. Thank you, please be seated. I want to thank all those who helped to make this meeting possible. In the interest of time, I ask that you hold your applause until all the introductions have been made. First, I would like to introduce the Select Board. Chairwoman Sabrina Dunlap, Vice Chair Ken Tram, Thomas Lepoma, Jeff Donahoe, and Stephen Whitley. Town Administrator Neil Cass, Town Clerk Tax Collector Christine Johnson, and Deputy Town Clerk Tax Collector Emily Sarriello. They will be taking the minutes of this meeting. Town Council is here with us tonight, William Warren of Donahue, Tecker, and Chandela. Our supervisors of the checklist are Virginia Haynes, Candace Garvin, and Lynn Clark, assisted by Mary Ledbeater and Jean Lightfoot, I believe. Our assistant moderators are Jim O'Brien and Anna Wells. Finally, I would like to thank all those who arranged for and participated in the budget hearings, the informational hearings, the setup for today's and Tuesday's election, and those who developed all the data and statistics that are before you today. In particular, I would like to thank Steve Lux for assistance with sound, the Town Public Works Department, and school facility staff. I suggest a round of applause is now in order. Now, I would like to ask Chairwoman Sabrina Dunlap to come forward for a special presentation. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sabrina Dunlap. I'm Chair of the Hopkinon Select Board. Thank you all for being here tonight. I would just like to acknowledge and appreciate a few very important people who will be moving on from their current roles. I'm not good at goodbyes, so I'm gonna try not to cry. These people are Neil Cass, Thomas Lepoma, and Ken Tram. First, Neil is moving on after 15-plus years as a Hopkinon Town Administrator. This is his 16th town meeting. Gotta give that a round of applause. Neil has been a truly wonderful administrator, and I know I speak for many when I say he will be dearly missed. He's not leaving us yet, and we'll have more opportunities to celebrate him before he moves on in May, so I'm gonna keep this brief. But I wanted to give him a heartfelt thank you and a very big round of applause. Thank you. And now our two Select Board members who are moving on from this board, Thomas Lepoma and Ken Tram, two people who care deeply about Hopkinton and have served the town with a lot of hard work over the years. Thomas has served on the board for more than five years, and he's also been the Select Board Rep on the Planning Board and Housing Committee. He's tackled complicated issues head-on with a data-driven mindset and a knack for problem-solving, all while keeping a sense of humor. He's been a great member of the board, and we will all miss him. Ken has served on the board for 12 years, with 10 of those as Vice Chair. All 12 years, he was the Select Board Rep on the Budget Committee and has been on the Energy Committee and Community Power Committee as well. Ken has been a steady hand on the Select Board, and he's just a very thoughtful person. Ken, we will miss you dearly. Thomas and Ken are thankfully both staying in town, so we'll continue to see them around. And in closing, I just want to say this board has been really fortunate to have you, and you both make this town a better place. So with heartfelt gratitude, I want to say thank you and one more round of applause for you both. Giving them our usual plaque of appreciation. Thank you. Thank you, Sabrina. And now for my administrative comments. We will follow generally accepted rules of procedures but will not be constrained by Roberts' rules. I will take articles in the order that they appear on the warrant unless there is a motion to take articles out of order. I will consider the articles as follows. I will announce the article number and the text of the article will be displayed on the overhead screen and is available in your town report. I will recognize a member of the Select Board or the petitioner to move the adoption of the article. If the motion is seconded, I will recognize the member of the board or the petitioner to explain the article. The meeting will debate and then vote on the article. I intend to focus comments, questions, and motions strictly on the warrant article that is on the table at the time. In the interest of allowing us to thoroughly address each article, I will not allow a discussion of issues that go beyond that article. If at any time any of you believe that my decisions are improper, then you may challenge them. You would do that by calling out point of order, at which time I will put that challenge to a voice vote. I encourage you to speak on issues that concern you. It remains a 300-year-old town meeting tradition and standard practice that comments should be made to the moderator, and I request that we continue this tradition and standard. In order to do so, I ask that you use the microphone and not speak from the audience. When you step up to the microphone, please clearly state your name and address. If you have a last name like mine, please spell your name for accurate minutes and the appreciation of our clerk. When you step up to the microphone, please identify yourself. Oh, I said that. Please limit comments to substantive input, not simple support or opposition. If you absolutely feel the need to repeat comments by a prior speaker, a simple ditto will do. To ensure that everyone has the ability to have your voice heard and we aren't here until the dawn hours of tomorrow, please limit your comments to three minutes. Individuals who are speaking to their motion are not required to abide by the three-minute rule but may well be served in the court of public opinion by also practicing brevity. Similarly, if the Select Board is presenting on an article, for or against, they are not bound to the three-minute time limit. That said, if I pull out a knitting project during your remarks, you may want to consider wrapping things up. I will give priority to first-time speakers, then allow additional comments from previous speakers. In order to maintain stability, please permit the moderator to be the bearer of time. In order to ensure equity in speaking, I will use a stopwatch here to track the time and will use a handy yellow and red card to indicate your speaking time. I will raise the yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. I will raise the red card when your time is up. I appreciate your courtesy to your fellow voters here today in complying with the time limit. If you have changes to suggest to a warrant article, they should be in the form of a motion. Unless those changes are very basic and simple, I will ask that they are provided to us in writing. I will take amendments to motions one at a time, and we will vote on them one at a time. I will not accept negative motions. Negative motions are those that require a no vote for the affirmative action, such as "I move we do not adopt the article." Once a motion has been made, the individual who seconds a motion must also be recorded in accordance with the public right to no law. If you second a motion, please stand and provide your name to be recorded. If I cannot hear you, I will ask you to step forward to the mic as well. I remind you that you must be a registered voter to vote. That includes voice votes, standing or hand votes, and any ballot votes. Non-voters may not speak at the meeting without the permission of the voters, except that the moderator will allow non-resident town officials and consultants or experts who are at the meeting to provide information about an article to speak. The Select Board has advised me that in the interest of time, after a vote is taken, they intend to move to restrict reconsideration of that article. This would prevent the article from being brought up again before this meeting ends. Any motion to move the question is non-debatable and will require a majority vote. I will not entertain such a motion until I feel the debate has had a reasonable time to continue, and I will allow all those standing in line at the time of the motion to speak. I will not accept a motion to call the question from the Select Board. If there is a request for a written ballot in compliance with state statute, it must be done for a secret ballot, it must be done on an individual warrant article, and it must be in writing by five voters present and made prior to the vote. At the time a vote is called, if there has been a request for a secret ballot vote, I will read the names of the five voters who petitioned for a secret ballot into the record and ask that those voters stand to ensure they are still present. Please note that the three bond articles and the SB 2 Petition Warrant Article all require a secret ballot vote. And in accordance with state statute, those ballot boxes must be open for one hour. If we were to run those ballot boxes back-to-backs, we would be here for a minimum till 10:00 PM. Instead of that, we have worked to design a system where we will run the secret ballot voting for these warrants concurrently. Ballot boxes for each of these four warrants will be identified with a color-coordinated poster that matches the color of your yes/no ballot. When it comes time for a secret ballot vote, I will first ask that the ballot counters come to the front of the room so we can organize them. We appreciate your understanding and staying seated until ballot counters have been stationed throughout the room. The ballot boxes will be located at six locations throughout the room. Your name tag will be checked when you vote, and a different colored ballot will be used for each vote that corresponds with the marker we check. Put your selected yes-or-no ballot box ballot in the wooden box and put the other half in the plastic recycling basket on the floor. If you put the wrong ballot in the wooden box, I can't give you another ballot. So just make sure you're being very careful. You can ask the ballot counters any questions if you have them. I also want to outline an updated process for secret ballot counting. Based on past experiences, we have situated a table for counting these ballots that should be in view for most voters in that corner of the room. Please note, there is a black rope guardrail that separates the counters from the members of the voting body. This is done in accordance with how we run ballot counts for elections. If there is a request for a recount, that will be conducted in the same manner, barring any of our counters needing to leave the meeting. While you are welcome to view the process, if you have questions, please direct those to the moderator or to the assistant moderators. Please do not speak to the ballot counters while they are counting. If there is a request for a recount, it will be conducted in the same manner as I said. And finally, my call to you all for civility. Town meeting is very much like a family, and we all have very important roles to fill. My job is to create a space where voters have the opportunity to participate. My job is quite literally to moderate that discussion, to ensure we don't devolve into heated back-and-force between voters or elected officials on this dais. Your job is to share your perspectives, ask your questions, and vote. In that vein, when speaking, I ask that you share your perspective and feelings without ascribing motive to others or disparaging others. Please speak in I statements, and please do not interrupt other speakers. Please don't make me use my gavel, I really don't like to, or my mom voice, my kids are out of the room, but they'll tell you, I can if I need to. The beauty of town meeting is truly coming together with your neighbors, friends, and sometimes family to chart our path forward. Undoubtedly, there will be disagreements tonight, but I urge us all to remember that we are here tonight because we care about this community, and holding this most generous interpretation, I believe, will help us to disagree without being disagreeable. Without objection, let's proceed. Article 1, The Election of Officers, and Article 2, Zoning Amendments. These were voted on by written ballot vote on Tuesday, March 11th. I will read the results, but before I do, a reminder that the elections and ballot counting is an open process and the public is entitled to attend. It's not always quick, especially when there are many write-in votes, but we are fortunate to have many dedicated volunteers who make the work possible. Article 1, The Election of Officers. To choose all necessary town officers by ballot and majority vote for the ensuing year as enumerated. For two positions to the Select Board Member, three-year term, Alyssa McCann with 873 votes, Victoria Vicki-Brann with 850 votes, Brian Russo with 533 votes. For one position Town Clerk Tax Collector, three-year term, Christine Johnson with 1,115 votes. Two positions for the Budget Committee Member, three-year term, Bryce Petritelli, 644. Lauren D. Clement, 544 votes. Christopher Gross, 462 votes. Amy Bogart, 448 votes. Karen Irwin, 188 votes. Eric Cecil, 67 votes. For one position for Library Trustee, a two-year term to fill, Katie Dillon, 1,124 votes. For one position Library Trustee, a three-year term, Sarah Wheatley, 1,110 votes. For one position of Cemetery Trustee for a three-year term, Kelly S. Lewis, 1,109 votes. One position trustee of trust funds, a three-year term, Christine Barton, 1,099 votes. All those that were just named or who were elected to a town position on Tuesday should come forward at the end of this meeting to be sworn in. If you cannot stay to the end of the meeting, we'll connect you with the clerk's office to be sworn in. Article 2, Zoning Amendments. Amendment 1, with 860 votes yes and 424 votes no, the amendment passed. Amendment 2, yes, 855, no, 410, the amendment passed. Amendment 3, yes votes 800, no votes 489, the amendment passed. Amendment 4, yes votes 707, no votes 429, the amendment passed. Amendment 5 passed with 670 votes in the affirmative, 577 no votes. Amendment 6 passed with 635 votes and 613 no votes. Amendment 7 failed with 622 yes votes and 649 no votes. Amendment 8 passed with 719 yes votes and 550 no votes. Amendment 9 passed with 718 yes votes and 543 no votes. Amendment 10 passed with 798 yes votes and 463 no votes. Amendment 11 passed with 870 yes votes and 390 no votes. Amendment 12 passed with 672 yes votes and 490 no votes. Amendment 13 passed with 761 yes votes and 392 no votes. Amendment 14 passed with 683 yes votes and 486 no votes. And now, we're ready for the remaining articles on the warrant. In the interest of time and hopes of not losing my voice once again, as I do, I have asked the board to preassign the members who will move and second each article. I will announce who will make and second it, and I will invite the motioner to read the article and then speak to it. Then I will ask for questions and comments from the floor. Does anyone object to this process? Great, let's jump into it. Article 3, Bond Issue for Transfer Station Lagoon Closure. Motion is made by Jeff Donahoe and seconded by Sabrina Dunlap. The Chair recognizes Jeff Donahoe for a motion.
Moderator Persino, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $4,015,000 for engineering, design, and construction for the closure of the Septage Lagoons at the Hopkinon-Webster Transfer Station and to issue not more than $4,015,000 worth of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33 as amended, to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain, or accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, which may be available for said project, and to comply with all laws applicable to said project, to authorize the Select Board to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest on and the maturity and other terms thereof, to authorize the Select Board to offset a portion of said appropriations with a grant from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and to authorize the Select Board to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. Do you have a second? Cool. All right, then. So here, because I'm afraid of Sarah, I'll try to make this as quick as possible. This is a picture, aerial picture of the transfer station. On the left side, you see that sort of a triangle area. That's the Septage Lagoons that we need to close. So there are three options available to us that we considered. One is beneficial reuse, to dig it all out and use it somewhere else. Because it's contaminated with PFAS, that's not really an option. The other was to dig it out and transport it somewhere else to be disposed of. Are we there yet? That's about $13.9 million. The third option is to create a monofil, which is a capped landfill on-site, to carry this, excavate, bury, and cap this site. That's about a little over $4 million, as we discussed. So the monofil plan was developed by Novus Engineering. We've worked with them for as long as I've been around. And we've worked closely with DES to make sure that this plan will meet their needs and requirements. Oh, there we go. So this is a graphic of the site there. As it stands now, it's got five different phases. In the upper left there, the other material storage areas where we're gonna de-water some materials and bring in fresh materials for cover. This is what it will look like after we finish that first phase. Why are we doing this? Well, there's a lot of reasons. The lagoons cannot be reopened. They're done. So they're sitting there now with septage sludge from years ago. Back in 2021, we were going to remove the permit for those DES-identified problems, including PFAS. Asked us to shut them down, we concurd. Right now, those sites are contributing to groundwater contamination. We're in violation of a number of standards EPA and DES. We've been awarded 10% a loan to slow an 10% principal forgiveness, so that $4 million will only pay back roughly $3.6 million. And this isn't just us. You know, these types of Septage Lagoons around the state are gonna have to be closed, and we got to the table first, which is one of the reasons that we were able to get this low-cost loan. During this period, the construction loan is at 1%. So while we're doing the construction in '25 and '26, that rate will only be 1%. I don't have the number in front of me. I think it's 3.072, that's the bond is no longer in construction. There's a lot of money that was requested for 2025, only 12% of it was awarded. We are among the lucky few. Again, why now? Anybody who's worked in construction, whether you've tried to build a house, an office, finish out a space in your basement, whatever, construction costs are through the roofs since COVID. They're expected to continue to go up. In addition, the contractor that is likely to do this for us is gonna be faced with as many as 13 other projects as these lagoons all over the state are closed. So they'll be able to charge a higher price to those who come later, I guess. One of the other issues here is that the next bond article we talk about is gonna be for the sludge removal up at the wastewater treatment plant up by the DPW sheds. You know, that project is overdue. That bond is gonna be for $700,000. If we had to transport that sludge elsewhere to be disposed of, the cost would be multiples of $700,000. The do-nothing option, it's always a chance. The problem here is that we'd be in violation of a number of environmental standards, and we could face fines and penalties of up to $25,000 a day. And so if we don't handle this now, there's a possibility that we could face significant fines and possibly civil lawsuits as well. As I said earlier, we're gonna start this project this year, assuming this bond is approved, and it'll continue through 2026. The total project cost is $4,015,000. Webster will pay 25% of the lagoon closing costs. That loan is planned to be 20 years, although the folks in Webster have requested a 10-year amortization. And so there'll be some discussion with them as to that. This is the, for those of you who can see it, this is the debt service schedule, and you can see that the green column is the Hopkinon tax impact. It's about 15 cents per thousand at the beginning, and it falls down to about 10 cents per thousand at the end of the bond. This has a, I can't see. The cost over the 20-year life of the bond would be about $1,150 on a $450,000 home. Questions?
That's my job. Thanks, Jeff. All right, I'll now open it up to the floor. Please remember, if you would like to speak, you can approach the mic and share your name and address, and please limit remarks to three minutes. Someone's gotta get up.
Hello. Amy Bogart, 146 Deer Path, Katoook. I know that there is a grant mentioned here. Where's the grant coming from? And where's this, well, it says from the state. Where's the state getting the money? Because you know what Washington's doing with all the grants. I'm afraid we won't get anything. So I just worry about counting on a grant that may not actually be there.
Thank you for the question, Amy. Is there a member of the board who'd like to respond?
So thank you for your question. This money is from the Clean Water Revolving Fund, which is a fund that's existed for a number of years. As the payments come back, that money is reissued out for other projects. And so I asked this very question of Neil today. We have a guarantee of those funds for this year, that 410,000. The state's guaranteed, yes. Neil's not. He'll be gone quarter. Sure.
Any further comments or questions, Sadie?
Sadie Conley, Bassett Mill Road. I have a couple of questions. You're talking about 4 million, over 4 million for a bond. Then you're getting 400 Then you're getting 401,000 from a grant. And then Webster's paying a million something because they're paying 25%. So basically, we're doing 2,610,000. So why are we having a bond issue for over 4 million? I mean, I don't understand.
Thank you for the question. Jeff, would you like to take that?
Sure. So there's a couple of issues at play here, Patty. Number one, to get the principal forgiveness, we have to bond the 4 million. We're getting 10%.
But what happens to the money? You're getting a grant, and you're getting money from Webster. So what's, where is that money going? We're bonding 4 million.
Yes.
But we're only really going to be responsible for about 2,606.
Reminder, it's not a debate.
No, no, I'm asking.
I was talking to Jeff. I wanted you to finish your question, Sadie.
I told you I was afraid of her.
You should be.
So because the town of Hopkinton manages the transfer station, we have to do the bond.
I understand that you have to do the bond. What I'm asking you-
I'm trying to answer you if you could be just a second.
You too.
The town of Webster will pay to us 25% of the debt service for that bond. They don't pay it themselves. They pay it to us, and we pay the whole bond amount.
And what about the other 400,000 that you're getting in a grant?
So during construction, there's a construction loan. So every expense that's made gets reimbursed by the state, and we have a 1% loan until we finish the project. Then it converts to the bond. At that point, we're really not, we're not, that's when they forgive the 401,000. So we're actually bonding at that point the lower amount that we will pay, and we'll make yearly payments, and Webster will reimburse us for that. Because of the way things have to be budgeted for, we have to appropriate the gross amount now, and then that will be the process. So as soon as the project is done and it converts to a long-term bond, the 401,000 is forgiven.
But still, we're still paying that 401,000, even though when it goes into a bond, we're going to get the money back. Where are we going to see that as taxpayers off our taxes, not just put into your pocket?
Repeat your question one second.
I said, and when do we, as taxpayers, get that credit of 401,000 on our tax bills rather than putting it in the selectman's pocket to use as a slush fund?
Well, first of all, nothing could be expended that isn't appropriated, so there's never a slush fund. Second, so, let's see, sort of lost my train of thought. Construction. So, so the, we will pay in 2025, 1% interest on any of the money we've taken in 2025. In 2026, we will pay 1% of the interest, we'll pay 1% of everything we've taken at that point. In 2027, will be the first bond payment, which is 291,722. We will pay that, and then Webster will reimburse us 72,931. So it's the 1%. So our costs are 15,000 in 2025, 30,113 in 2026, and then the 218 minus Webster's share in 2027, and then continue.
But you're still not answering my question, Neil. When do the taxpayers get credit for that 401,000 that we've already, that we bonded? You're getting back as a grant.
If you look at the screen, the third line down, 3,614,000, that's the amount that we'll actually bond at that time. That's the difference between the 4,000, 4,150,000 and that 3,614,000. That's the credit. That's the 10% debt forgiveness.
I have to go sit in my seat so I can see your grant.
It's okay. Come on up. You can ask another question. This guy, I'll wait till Sarah tells you you can speak.
Josh Keteff, Moran Road. I apologize I was late. Just a question, has Webster already approved this? And what happens if they don't?
Jeff?
Yeah, they don't actually have to approve it because they are a partner here in this operation of transfer station. They pay 25% of all the expenses for the operations transfer station, including anything that's approved here.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Lauren Clement, 86 Maple Street. At a select board meeting and a discussion on this, the Webster chair of the select board came and said there was interest in them paying this bond off over the course of 10 years instead of 20 years. And I never heard the results of how that shook out. So if you could clarify if they are still allowed to do that, or if that changes any of this scale. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. We have yet to take up that question, and we have time to take that up. Because as Neil was saying, we pay 1% during the construction period. So we don't need to make that decision until it converts to the actual bond. But we will take up that question at some point in the future.
Any further questions or comments?
I have a question. I didn't do my homework.
What's your name and address, please?
Oh, yeah. Joy Bloomfield, Woodland Drive. Jeff, I have a question. What does capping mean? And is this, does this mean all of this goes away? Or are we just covering up?
We're creating a lined facility for the existing sludge to be placed into and then covered over, much as the existing landfill-
Don't we?
Please don't interrupt when people are answering.
Sorry.
Much as the existing landfill that we had before we built the transfer station was capped at that time.
Right.
So this area has not had a cap. There'll be an underliner with three or four levels of gravel, stone, sand, and then the material will go into that, and then there will be a cap constructed over that. So it's a sort of like a, I want to say airtight, it's not airtight, obviously, but it's lined top and bottom so that water doesn't transition through it.
Okay. So will it ever go away?
The EPA does, I think the EPA refers to PFAS as a forever chemical.
That's what I thought. Because they have that out on the coast, don't they?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Quick reminder to turn your cell phones on silent.
Wasn't me.
I'm done. You answered my question.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joy.
I don't know how to do-
You should be able to take that out.
I see.
Should be.
There we go.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Lapree. I live on Highland Ave. Thank you. A couple of questions for you. Did I, did I hear that you said that we will be taking the sludge that we're going to be cleaning out of the septic or the treatment center, station? Are we going to put that in the, in the septic lagoon after we cap it or before we cap it? Is that where-
In this monofil, yes.
Yeah. So that'll, you'd indicate that would save quite a bit of money rather than sending it off someplace else, right?
Correct.
Now, when it comes to de-watering, how do you, how do you plan to do that without the watering that's coming out? It is not going to be polluting the groundwater. Do you have an idea about that?
I confess that I'm not an engineer, Bob. And I don't have that answer. I don't know if anybody up here does.
I'm not an engineer, but I've sat with them over and over again. So there'll be two piles there. One will be a basically dry pile, one as, as the lagoons are emptied, and another will be a wet pile. Before that happens, there'll be a sort of receptacle area put in, and everything will run into that and be preserved and go into that. And then the final phase of the five-phase plan will take care of that and put all of that sludge in there, too. So the engineers working with DES have a plan to de-water and do that. Obviously, what's coming out of the wastewater treatment will be somewhat de-watered before it's driven across town.
Right. Okay, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Can someone help Bob put the mic up? Thank you, Lauren. All right. Any other comments or questions on this article? Okay. Pause. While they're walking to the mic, I will remind you, there is overflow seating in the auditorium. They're much comfier seats if anybody wants to go up there and take a break.
Sorry. Tricia Lambert, 305 Galloping Hill Road. So assuming this is the current fix for the time, is there any type of sign-off on this, that this is going to be good forever for the forever chemicals? Liability?
Mr. Donahoe, anybody want to take that question?
Sure.
Sorry.
So my understanding is that DES has worked on this plan for us with Nobus. It is the state of the art for disposing of this product. We had the opportunity, option to dig it up and transfer it somewhere else. That was $13.9 million. We didn't think that was a good idea. So this is, this is the state of the art as we know it. PFAS has been around for, the first time I heard PFAS was about 18 years ago. I do a lot of work with military-based communities, and at that time, it was, oh, the EPA is going to identify this new potential hazard, and you have to be prepared for it. The military has spent billions of dollars resolving this problem on bases. And so, you know, this is the best that DES, best practice from DPS, DES, excuse me. Let's not say something might not change 25 years from now. I can't guarantee that.
I have to ask the question again. Follow up.
Thank you. Is there going to be some kind of written guarantee that we have done our part and that it will never come up again as being a environmental issue that the town has to pay for again?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Environmental standards change frequently. As I say, this is the state of the art closure for a project like this as of today.
Okay. So, okay. How long has this been open and been in this condition and been used for such PFAS chemicals? The dumping?
So, so the way that this occurred, you want to? The way that this occurred, the vast majority of people here have a septic system at their home. This came from people's homes. The septic company came and pumped your tank. They brought it to us, paid a fee, and they dumped it in the, in the lagoon ponds that we have. And so, you know, this isn't a chemical. We didn't have a chemical company here that dumped a bunch of stuff. This is all from personal homes, businesses that use septic. It's not uncommon. I mean, the issue arose originally from firefighting foam, and that's how the military got so much of a problem because they used to train everywhere. But this is the, there's 13 of these type of landfills in the state. They're all going to close.
So how many years? That's the question. How many, how long has this been going on?
I would say-
As a reminder, we're not getting into a back and forth debate.
But let him finish.
Over 30 years.
Okay. I heard it was 50. I don't, we'll take your 30. Thank you.
Sure.
If folks have more than one question, to the extent possible, you can say that when you start. I think that will be helpful to avoid the back and forth. You can step forward.
My name's Amelia Feudner, 277 Pinewood Drive. I know that this was talked about in one of the meetings, but I just was just wondering if you could recap to everybody what would happen if this doesn't get approved and we don't do anything with these lagoons.
I think that was asked and answered, but if you want to answer one more time, Jeff, for emphasis, that'd be good.
Sure. We're in violation today. Okay? We're creating environmental hazards and contamination today. If we don't do this project, that will continue. There's a threat of being sued. There's a threat of being fined. You know, we installed the water system down there by the transfer station 15 or so years ago for the people in that neighborhood to protect them. But we're at risk for a civil lawsuit. We're at risk of fines of $25,000 a day. That's why we're here.
Thank you, Ms. Charlie.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Connolly, Briar Hill Road. Assuming we pass this bond issue and we do the work, complete it, will there be ongoing maintenance costs throughout the years? And if so, what will that run us?
Mr. Donahoe? Neil?
I guess the only fortunate thing about this is it's right next to our landfill. So that area is already monitored and has test wells and is completely tested all the time. That does not mean that the requirements won't change. 10 years ago, we weren't testing for PFAS. We are now, so the costs went up. But relatively speaking, everything is in place to do that.
Just an additional question. So it's just testing, no additional maintenance is required?
It will have to be mowed, like the landfill is. And it is being designed so you could put solar panels on it.
Terrific. Thank you, Neil.
Sandy Bender, Briar Hill Road. If-
Could you repeat your name? I didn't hear it.
Sandy Bender.
Thank you.
Thank you. If, if this is going to be closed down, where are the septic companies going to be able to dump our septic tank waste?
So, so we've been shut down since 2021, 2021. And so I know I've had my tank pumped, and I know the price went up because they have to drive it further. I believe they're taking it to Concord is the primary location. They have a different type of, I think they have an existing liner under theirs. I'm not certain of that. Don't hold me to that. But I believe it goes to Concord. And we have a contract with Allenstown. I'm being whispered in my ear.
So is there an alternate dumping site on, at the transfer station? Because I see septic trucks getting weighed and going out, out back. Are they just going for a pleasure cruise or what?
I don't have an answer to that. I have not seen one, and I, January of 2022 is the last time that they were permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any further comments or questions on this article? All right. Seeing none, I will invite our ballot counters to come down and get set up. As a reminder, voters, please wait until they are set up so we can avoid a little bit of chaos, and I will give further instructions once they are placed. Again, there is overflow seating in the auditorium. So after you vote, if you want to go get comfy, get a snack, you're more than welcome to. Before you all start talking, we'll review what we're voting on, okay? Perfect. Great job. All right. As a reminder, you are voting on Article Three, a bond issue for the transfer station lagoon closure. If you would like to vote yes on that article, you will rip your ballot in half. You will put a yes in the ballot box and put the no in the recycling bin. If you would like to vote no on Article Three, you will rip your ballot in half, put the no in the wooden ballot box, and put the yes in the recycling bin. Nod your head if you understand. Nod your head if you understand. Raise your hand if you have any questions. Great. This ballot is going to be bright pink. You can't miss it. So make sure you're voting with a pink ballot, you will get a pink marker on your tag and you'll be good to go. But not yet. I'll do a preview of what happens after everybody has the first go-round of your vote. We will have everybody come up after about fifteen or twenty minutes or so, when it looks like everybody's counted their ballot. The ballot counters will put the ballots that are in their small wooden boxes into one of our big wooden boxes. We have a poster that will go on the outside of that. And if you have not voted before we put all the pink ballots in there, you can go up at any time over the hour and you can vote in that ballot box. Everybody understand? Thumbs up? Great. All right, you may now find the secret ballot box of your preference. I am going to ask that the ballot counters take the vote of anyone who might still be in your line and then bring your ballot boxes up to the front. There are six. You don't have to rush. As a reminder, the small wooden ballot boxes will be deposited into the big wooden ballot box that has a As a reminder, if you would like to vote yes on Article Three, the bond issue for the transfer station lagoon closure, pink sign to match the bright pink ballots. put the yes slip in the wooden ballot box. That will be open until seven fifty-three. If you would like to vote no, put the no slip in the wooden ballot box and put the vote you do not want to cast in the recycling bin. It is six fifty-three, so this ballot box will be open until seven fifty-three. The open ballot box will be the big ballot box, that's where anyone who has not yet cast a ballot will vote. You, you got it. All right, don't forget to bring the recycling bins with you, please. Thank you. If you didn't bring a recycling bin, please bring it up. All right. As a reminder, if you still need to vote on Article Three, you may cast your ballot at the front of the room before seven fifty-three. Seeing all the select board members have been seated, we are going to move on to Article Four. Quiet coyotes, please. All right, Article Four, Bond Issue for Wastewater Treatment Facility Sledge Removal. The motion is made by Jeff Donahue and seconded by Ken Traum. The chair recognizes Jeff Donahue for a motion and a reminder for everyone to cease your conversations in the crowds. Thanks so much.
Moderator Perschino, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars for engineering, design, and construction for sludge removal from the wastewater treatment facility lagoons and to issue not more than seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA Thirty-three as amended, to authorize a sec- select board to apply for, obtain, and obsec- accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, which may be available for said project and to comply with all laws applicable to said project, to authorize a select board to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest and the maturity and other items, terms thereof, and to authorize the select board to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. Here we go again. I promise this one will be much faster. Uh, so you see here on the screen, this is the picture of the wastewater treatment facility, those are the two lagoons that are, uh, need to be, have the sludge removed. What needs to be done? The sludge hasn't been cleaned out of these two lagoons, uh, in twenty-two years, um, which is well beyond expectation. It was planned for in the, in the CIP, but PFAS has changed how it can be dealt with now. As I, we discussed in the last bond, PFAS is a significant chemical, uh, and disposing of it is significantly expensive. If the transfer station lagoon closing move forward, the sludge can go there at a cost of seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. If not, it's a multimillion dollar cost. Sludge would be moved from here at the wastewater treatment facility and transported up to the transfer station. The, the total cost of the project is seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. It's a ten-year loan and the first payment would be in twenty twenty-six at just under a hundred thousand dollars. We've used the four percent cost of capital or bond interest rate to estimate the payments. Yeah, I do that every time. Yeah, I do that every time. Yeah, I do that every time. Uh, this is the, the same type of a chart that shows the impact Uh, this is the, the same type of a chart that shows the impact uh, on a $500,000 property over the 10-year life of the bond would be about $311 total uh, on a $500,000 property over the 10-year life of the bond would be about $311 total uh, over that 10-year period. uh, over that 10-year period. Tax impact starts at about seven cents per thousand, falls to about five and a half cents per thousand toward the end of the bond. Tax impact starts at about seven cents per thousand, falls to about five and a half cents per thousand toward the end of the bond.
Thank you, Jeff. With that, we'll open it up to the floor. Thank you, Jeff. With that, we'll open it up to the floor. If you have any comments or questions, please step up to the mic and share your name and address. If you have any comments or questions, please step up to the mic and share your name and address. All right. Seeing none, uh, we will call the ballot counters back. All right. Seeing none, uh, we will call the ballot counters back. Your last chance before they get here. Your last chance before they get here. Setty can't let it go. Here we go, kid. Setty can't let it go. Here we go, kid. Ballot counters, you can still come up. It's okay. Ballot counters, you can still come up. It's okay. We'll multitask. We'll multitask.
Setty Conley, Bassett Mill Road. Setty Conley, Bassett Mill Road. The question I have is why are we people who do not use The question I have is why are we people who do not use this system, that we have septic systems, why are we being responsible for the wastewater? this system, that we have septic systems, why are we being responsible for the wastewater?
Mr. Donahoe, would you like to answer that? Mr. Donahoe, would you like to answer that? Neelis, great. Neelis, great.
He handed me the mic, so I guess I, um, so the, the two water systems in town are owned by the two precincts. He handed me the mic, so I guess I, um, so the, the two water systems in town are owned by the two precincts. The sewer system is owned by the town. The sewer system is owned by the town. Um, so this is a town responsibility. Um, so this is a town responsibility. It has been since it was put in. I know the select board has looked at raising the rates and probably will be doing that significantly over the next few years to help cover some of these costs. It has been since it was put in. I know the select board has looked at raising the rates and probably will be doing that significantly over the next few years to help cover some of these costs. Um, but the, also, it does cover the downtown, which is the business section, as well as the schools, so. Um, but the, also, it does cover the downtown, which is the business section, as well as the schools, so.
But the question still is, But the question still is, why is the whole town being responsible? Why haven't the user fees been high enough to cover the expenses? why is the whole town being responsible? Why haven't the user fees been high enough to cover the expenses?
It, it's owned by the town. I can't speak for what has or hasn't been done. It, it's owned by the town. I can't speak for what has or hasn't been done.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Thank you, Mr. Cass. Mr. Rondo? Mr. Rondo?
Gary Rondo, East Pennacook Road. Gary Rondo, East Pennacook Road. The 712 is for design, construction, and engineering. Is that correct? The 712 is for design, construction, and engineering. Is that correct?
And removal. And removal.
And removal. Where's the design, construction, and engineering for just transporting? And removal. Where's the design, construction, and engineering for just transporting? Cause you're digging it out and transporting it. Yes? Cause you're digging it out and transporting it. Yes?
I'm sorry, Gary. Could you say that again? I'm sorry, Gary. Could you say that again?
It says design, engineering, construction, It says design, engineering, construction, and removal. and removal. So what is the engineering point of removal? Cause that's what we're doing. We're just digging it out and moving it. So what is the engineering point of removal? Cause that's what we're doing. We're just digging it out and moving it. Where's the design, engineering, and construction come in? Where's the design, engineering, and construction come in? Is it $712,000 to dig it out and move it? Is it $712,000 to dig it out and move it?
So that's every, everything. If I understand your question, you're asking what the heck are we designing? So that's every, everything. If I understand your question, you're asking what the heck are we designing?
Yes. How, how are you designing a removal and transfer? Yes. How, how are you designing a removal and transfer?
Yeah, so, because it has the PFAS, Yeah, so, because it has the PFAS, there are special handling requirements which engineers have to deal with. there are special handling requirements which engineers have to deal with.
Special loaders, I guess. Special loaders, I guess.
And, and excessive permitting, as you might guess. And, and excessive permitting, as you might guess. And we wanna, we wanna protect the people who live on that road. We're gonna be driving by like. And we wanna, we wanna protect the people who live on that road. We're gonna be driving by like.
I really do. And thank you. I really do. And thank you.
Lauren Clemente, 86 Maple Street, um, to help with the previous comment about, uh, precinct people Lauren Clemente, 86 Maple Street, um, to help with the previous comment about, uh, precinct people being responsible for the payments on here, um, being responsible for the payments on here, um, the precinct folks are also responsible for covering the expense for the lagoon, so the precinct folks are also responsible for covering the expense for the lagoon, so in theory, if you have town sewer, you're not, it wasn't those houses that contributed to the lagoon in theory, if you have town sewer, you're not, it wasn't those houses that contributed to the lagoon issue because they didn't have their septic pumps, so I think it's a fair wash either way. issue because they didn't have their septic pump, so I think it's a fair wash either way.
All right. Any further comments or questions? All right. Any further comments or questions? Yes. Yes.
Cheryl Morris, 396 Park Avenue. This was explained to me in Hennecor a lot of years ago that the wastewater facilities Cheryl Morris, 396 Park Avenue. This was explained to me in Hennecor a lot of years ago that the wastewater facilities and your water supply facilities are assets of the community, and the whole community owns them. and your water supply facilities are assets of the community, and the whole community owns them. That's why they, they, um, are valuable in attracting businesses and attracting That's why they, they, um, are valuable in attracting businesses and attracting all the, uh, new permits that we just voted in about expanding, getting building downtown because we have water. all the, uh, new permits that we just voted in about expanding, getting building downtown because we have water. So the facility has to be maintained by the communities, and I believe there's some degree of state enforcement, but the So the facility has to be maintained by the communities, and I believe there's some degree of state enforcement, but the ratepayers pay to make it run, pay to make it work, and it's based on how much you use. ratepayers pay to make it run, pay to make it work, and it's based on how much you use. So it's a, it's a marriage of sorts, not always an agreeance, but it's not something that any other town is able to get out of either, so. So it's a, it's a marriage of sorts, not always an agreeance, but it's not something that any other town is able to get out of either, so.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Morris. All right. Thank you, Ms. Morris. All right. Seeing no further comment or question, the ballot counters are down here. I will go over the process again. All right. Seeing no further comment or question, the ballot counters are down here. I will go over the process again. This ballot is a secret ballot and has to be open for one hour once they get set up. This ballot is a secret ballot and has to be open for one hour once they get set up. There will be six stations set up again throughout the room. There will be six stations set up again throughout the room. This ballot you'll be voting on with a yellow ballot. It will be bright yellow. This ballot you'll be voting on with a yellow ballot. It will be bright yellow. We'll do the same thing. We'll hold those ballot boxes open for approximately 20 minutes until everyone's had a reasonable time to cast their ballot. We'll do the same thing. We'll hold those ballot boxes open for approximately 20 minutes until everyone's had a reasonable time to cast their ballot. Once I call the ballot counters back with their boxes, Once I call the ballot counters back with their boxes, they will put them in the second big box, and we will add a bright yellow poster to that, so if you didn't have time to vote before, they will put them in the second big box, and we will add a bright yellow poster to that, so if you didn't have time to vote before, you'll be able to do that. I will announce the time once we get the ballot counter set up. you'll be able to do that. I will announce the time once we get the ballot counter set up. As a reminder, if you want to vote yes on Article 4, the bond issue for wastewater treatment facility sledge removal, As a reminder, if you want to vote yes on Article 4, the bond issue for wastewater treatment facility sledge removal, you will put the yes ballot in the wooden ballot box. you will put the yes ballot in the wooden ballot box. If you would like to vote no on Article 4, you put the no in the wooden ballot box. If you would like to vote no on Article 4, you put the no in the wooden ballot box. If you put the wrong ballot in, I cannot give you another ballot. Okay? If you put the wrong ballot in, I cannot give you another ballot. Okay? Everybody good? Thumbs up? Everybody good? Thumbs up? Okay, stay seated until I tell you to go. Okay, stay seated until I tell you to go. Ballot counters, go! Ballot counters, go! I see some of you forgot that I was gonna tell you when you could get up, Mr. Houston. All right. Seeing that the ballot counters are set up, you may now find. Norm, do you have a question or are you confused? You need a recycling bin? Okay. We're gonna get it to you. Thank you. All right. Find the ballot box you would like to vote in. Cast your ballot on Article 4, the bond issue for wastewater treatment facility. It is 7:18. This ballot will be open until 8:18. All right. Seeing that the ballot counters are set up, Norm, do you have a question or are you confused? You need a recycling bin? We're gonna get it to you. Thank you. All right. Find the ballot box you would like to vote in. Cast your ballot on Article 4, the bond issue for wastewater treatment facility sledge removal. It is 7:18. This ballot will be open until 8:18. Shh. If you could stop talking and start settling, we will maybe get out of here before tomorrow. These, these two, they get it. We got bedtime. As a reminder, Article 3, the ballot box is still open for 23 minutes until 7:53. If you have not cast your ballot on Article 3, which is a reminder, is the pink ballot. I don't like the face that my assistant moderator is giving me right now. Please hold.
All right, folks, I'm gonna give you a couple more minutes and then we'll get settled. As a reminder, the fire department's giving out free ice cream. It's delicious. Quite good. Three flavors to choose from. All right, folks, seeing that most of you have had the opportunity to cast your ballot, I am going to have the secret ballot counters come forward with your ballot box. And your, Catherine, wait, wait, turn around. The ballot counters are gonna bring their wooden ballot boxes, the small ones up here. They're going to put their yellow ballots in the big ballot box with the yellow sign. If you had not had a time to cast your ballot on Article Four yet, that ballot box will be open until eight eighteen. If you could stop talking and start settling, we will maybe get out of here before tomorrow. Okay? These, these two, they get it. We got bedtime. As a reminder, Article Three, the ballot box is still open for twenty-three minutes until seven fifty-three. If you have not cast your ballot on Article Three, which is a reminder, is the pink ballot. I don't like the face that my assistant moderator is giving me right now. Please hold. Crisis averted. We just needed the combination to the lockbox. I'll never tell. All right, so as the secret ballot counters combine their Article Four votes, we will move on to Article Five. The bond issue for wastewater infrastructure condition assessment. The motion is made by Jeff Donahoe and seconded by Thomas Lepoma. The chair recognizes Jeff Donahoe for a motion.
Madre Pachino, I move that the town raise an appropriate sum of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of doing a wastewater infrastructure condition assessment and to authorize the issuance of not more than one hundred and twenty thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA thirty-three and to further authorize the select board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the conditions and rate of, rates of interest thereon and to further authorize the select board to offset a portion of set appropriation by a grant from the Clean Water State Revolving Funds. It being understood that repayment of the loan funds may include principal forgiveness of one hundred thousand dollars. One last time, folks. So the purpose of this grant, or this loan, excuse me, uh, one hundred and twenty thousand dollar expenditure is to send cameras up all the sewer pipes to determine their shape and to determine if there's any stormwater inflow or infiltration. Uh, the cost is estimated one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We've received a low interest loan from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Hundred percent, a hundred thousand dollars of this cost will be refunded, forgiven. The town's ultimately gonna borrow twenty thousand dollars. It's gonna be a five-year loan. The first payment will be in twenty twenty-six. Estimated to be four thousand four hundred dollars. A two-point-oh-five percent rate has been used to estimate, uh, the in, the interest, uh, in pr- principal payments. Overall, this is a seven dollar and sixty-one cent impact on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home over the five years.
Thank you, Jeff. I will now open it to the floor. If you would like to make a question or comment, please come to the mic and state your name and address.
Christopher Gross, seventy-six, Checkered Berry Lane. Uh, why are we borrowing twenty thousand dollars? Why aren't we just paying for that?
Would someone on the board like to take that question?
So once again, I ask this very question, uh, because it struck me as odd. Uh, the fact of the matter is, we have to authorize the one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in order to get a hundred thousand dollar forgiveness. So you have to ask for it and then they'll give it back to you afterwards. The net cost to us is twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? I see people moving.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Neil Irvin, six fifteen Main Street. Is there any early payment penalty? So if we bond, if we gross appropriate the one hundred and twenty thousand, we get the hundred thousand dollars back, we just pay off the twenty thousand dollars in one fell swoop, and then we don't have to pay twelve hundred dollars in interest.
To my knowledge, there is not a prepayment penalty, and that's a fine strategy.
Are there any further comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna let our ballot counters finish their vote and then ask the rest of them to come down to get ready for another secret ballot vote. I know you're all are having so much fun. We're all getting our steps in. As a reminder, I'm gonna have the ballot counters get set up first. Please stay seated until I tell you go, Mr. Houston. I see you right there, right in front of me, all right? Okay. As a reminder, if you would like to vote yes on Article Five, the bond issue for wastewater infrastructure condition assessment, you will rip your ballot in half, take the yes slip and put that in the wooden ballot box and put the no in the recycling bin. If you would like to vote no on Article Five, you're gonna rip your ballot in half. You're gonna put no in the wooden ballot and you're gonna put yes in the recycling bin. I cannot give you another ballot if you make a mistake. I'm so sorry. We are strategically going to have this ballot be on the floor, all six, until seven fifty-three because otherwise, we don't have a wooden box to put them in. So just know, you've got like a twenty-minute break. Good time to get ice cream. I don't know, they keep telling me to tell you that. It's free. This ballot is going to be lime green. You will get a lime green marker, you will get a lime green ballot. And then if you don't have time to vote while we're on the floor, there will be a lime green poster on one of the big ballot boxes. We're almost ready. All right, everyone except for Mr. Houston is excused and you may go pass your ballot. It is currently seven thirty-six. This ballot on Article Five will be open until eight thirty-six. I am going to close that ballot. Those ballots will be put in the ballot counting area and then that wooden ballot box will be the depository for the green ballots on Article Five. Ballot counters who are out with your boxes for Article Five, please hold for three more minutes. Okay, I'll tell you when I come down. But for now, we are going to get started on Article Six. Once everyone settles into their seats and stops talking, Mr. Leno. Mr. Leno. Mr. Leno. Yeah, there you go. Three times. Mr. Leno, yeah, there you go, three times. Okay, we're having fun. All right, Article Six. The adoption of official ballot referendum form of meeting. Shh, we need the microphone, Steve. Steve, we need the microphone, thank you. All right, the motion is made by Amanda Gilman, seconded by Bueller, Lauren Clement, Maple Street, great. And I will recognize Amanda Gilman, one of the petitioners, to speak to her motion.
That is my presentation for Article Six, and I am going to speak to it. It's probably a little confusing, my name's Amanda Gilman, and I petitioned this warrant along with some other people. And I am not allowed to use the podium to speak to you. So y'all are going to have to bear with me, I need to speak from here, but this is my slideshow.
I would very appreciate it if you are not disparaging the moderator while you're giving your remarks, Amanda. You've been given the ability to have a PowerPoint presentation, and everyone speaks from the floor. That's equitable.
So I was about to say Sarah has given me the good grace to allow me to have my slides up and worked tirelessly along with Neil today to help me out on this because I didn't have access to the slides to make changes that she suggested today. So we're going to have to bear with us, and I'm going to signal to Neil, and he's going to flip the slides for me. So I actually would love it if you would go back to the first slide, I wasn't quite ready for that. So nice, thank you. Uh, and this is very similar to what you saw at school district meeting because for SB Two to be accepted, it has to be voted on in person here for the town. And it would have had to have been voted on in person for the school, so they're separate. So you can, some towns have SB Two for school and some have it for town. And some have it for both, and some have it for none, okay? So this is just for the town tonight. So I'm wondering how many people here tonight know someone who couldn't make it? I do, I know a lot of people who couldn't make it. We all have friends and family who couldn't be here, that's just a point of fact, right? This, it, it, there are pro, there are difficulties with coming to meetings, there's no doubt about it. There's childcare, and while generously provided, we do have childcare here, or they have childcare. Uh, it isn't necessarily right for all families. And in fact, our own Alyssa McKeon made that point at the public hearing for Senate Bill Two that the town had and said that childcare i- it isn't working for her, okay?
So let's not speak to other people's sentiments, thank you.
That was public record, but I will try to refrain. So there's also people who are working, they might have shifts, twelve-hour shifts. I know a nurse who's not here tonight because she worked till seven, or seven thirty, I guess, and, and won't be home until eight. Um, there's also people who have second shift. Obviously, there's people in the military, uh, who could be deployed. But there's big one, I think, that is most poignant, is people with disabilities or physical limitations that make sitting in the gym for a long period of time prohibitive. Neil, could you hit Slide Two for me, please? Thank you, so that's a photo from Tuesday ballot day that we just had with the three handicap spots out front filled, and they were filled basically all day, as they always are. Uh, which is beautiful, it's awesome. All of the ballot voting days, people are able to come out and, and cast their paper ballot. And I think it's a fantastic thing. In fact, I know an octogenarian from town who came with her walker, uh, someone's grandparent that I know. And she was so excited to be here and cast her ballot. Uh, and that's the one time she gets to come out, but she can't sit through town meeting anymore, which she finds very sad. Uh, another beautiful story, a couple of years ago, and this is a compliment, so if you would please allow me a little leeway because I'm going to reference something amazing that Sarah Peresino did.
Not allowed, we don't do that here. Okay, sarcasm.
I was like, how do I get around it without saying your name? Um, she did everything possible to help somebody vote. There was a new mom who wanted to vote, she had delivered her baby, had an emergency gallbladder or immediate gallbladder surgery afterwards, after her induction and her delivery, and insisted on being discharged that night so she could make it here by seven PM to vote. And Sarah went out of her way to accommodate that. We got her a chair inside, Sarah checked her in, she got her a ballot, and she got to vote, and it was awesome. And Sarah, I'm extremely grateful for what you did in making that happen. So the point I know, that I know we all agree with, and I've heard it over and over, is that access to voting is vitally important. We, people in this town definitely agree with that. So whether you agree or disagree with Senate Bill Two, we all think that people deserve the right to vote and access to voting. But the question is, what do we do about it? Could you hit Slide Three or the next slide, please, Neil? Hmm. Why don't you skip ahead, please? And again, I seem to be missing one that I wasn't thinking of. Fine, we'll move on. Um, SB Two is the answer, it is not the problem. So there's this discussion about declining attendance at deliberative sessions. And I would argue that that is actually a symptom of our busy lives. The anecdotal stories about declining attendance at the deliberative sessions are really just that, they're anecdotes. These stories don't factor in the demographics of the town, so it's hard to compare it to Hopkinton. They don't access, uh, take into account the voter participation rates before SB Two, except to say, oh, it used to be so much better. But now remember this point, no school nor town has passed SB Two since its passage requirement was changed to in-person sixty percent supermajority voting like we have to have today. So all the eighty towns and eighty schools and seventy-two towns who passed SB Two did so when you could do it at the Tuesday ballot. So this means two things, all the anecdotal stories about declining deliberative session attendance are, are comparing current attendance with school meeting attendance that was measured before the passage of SB Two, which was back around two thousand, majority of them passed it almost twenty-five years ago. A lot has changed in a quarter of a century in terms of our population and what we do. So I think it's unfair to compare deliberative sessions to declining voter attendance for that reason. Likely town meeting annual attendance would have declined anyways without SB Two. The second thing to take notice of is since SB Two's approval, since it was moved to the in-person supermajority, sixty percent approval, I mean, is that it further disenfranchises the very voters that the law was created to protect. Meaning that the octogenarian I referenced, a lifetime resident of Hopkinton, and also the new mom have to show up in person at a meeting in order to vote to say, I can't come in person. To me, that doesn't make any sense, and hence why none of those schools, or the eighty schools or seventy-two towns that have SB Two have been able to do it after it was changed to in-person voting because it's prohibitive. All those towns and districts approved SB Two at the ballot when people had voting accessible to them. Could you move to the next slide, please? So we could talk about the deliberative session, pros, cons, and we could also talk about what it means to be an informed voter. But really, I would like to suggest another way to look at this concept. I suggest that voting population, a voting population, that wants to vote and takes the time to go to the ballot on a Tuesday and vote is more engaged in the process than those who are not here tonight and have given up and stopped perhaps paying attention. It's a small fraction of our population that actually comes to these meetings. And people I have heard say, I can't make the meetings, so what's the point of following it anyways? Our current nostalgic system of insisting on voting in person on just this one day is disenfranchising our voters. Neil, do you think you could skip ahead, keep going? Keep going. There we go, thank you. I would also suggest that Hopkinton is unique. That whole thing about the Hopkinton Way that you've all said before, you've all heard the Hopkinton Way. Well, that's what we have here today, look at this gym, right? We are all engaged in participating. We're informed members of a community who's come together to do what we think is best for the town and for the neighbors that we love. I suggest that Hopkinton residents are actually very different. So even if I am wrong about the reasons for supposed declining attendance, that this won't be a problem in Hopkinton. I love these meetings, I've been attending them since I was a little girl selling concessions. Much like, yep. I won't stop coming because the name has been changed to a deliberative session, will you? I suggest not. Could you skip ahead a slide, Neil, please? I'm not sure if that's right or not, but we are going to make the best of this. Uh, I also, actually, could you jump ahead, please? And that's all you have, huh? Okay, go back, thank you, friend. We'll go with that. I also need to address fears over the default budget. This is what would pass if the proposed operating budget were to fail under SB Two. Back last year, when I really started supporting SB Two because I had missed my second meeting in a row due to an annual basketball tournament that HISA plays in every year. In fact, tonight, we have another third, fourth boys team playing, uh, in the CARP tournament up in Lebanon. So all of those boys' parents are not here either, uh, but I digress. So last year, as a school administrator friend of mine warned me not to push for SB Two because there are a lot of things that can be done to inflate the budget. This person told me. Thereby making the proposed operating budget the less costly choice. And I said, that's okay, it's not about controlling the budget. And case in point, our own school district calculated a default budget this year. I assume out of academic exercise, perhaps, to see what the dollar amount would be. And you know what? It was about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than the proposed operating budget. So if that's the case, at the ballot box, the voters would simply choose to approve the one they saw best. And perhaps in this case, it would be the proposed operating budget because the, obviously, the board and the administrators were being good stewards of our money. I told my friend, as I said a minute ago, the default budget doesn't matter to me. It doesn't matter to people who want access to voting, that's not what SB Two is about. It's about access to voting. So what happens if there are great needs in the town? This is a good question, what if we get stuck with that lousy default budget? And the operating cost, the operating budget was super high, default budget, uh, is what passes. Let's say the town really needs the higher budget. Well, this, there's an outlet valve with SB Two, much like there is here. Our elected officials could determine that they can't live on the default budget, and they could reconvene another special meeting, deliberative session, and another vote where they could say, okay, propose another number, and we could try to do it again. It is definitely an option, it's an outlet valve. So I have two final thoughts to share. First, I want to address this, a, a new idea that was brought up at the public hearing for SB Two of a charter, which is somehow a hybrid system between our current town system and SB Two. I've also heard several of my fellow townspeople say at last year's meeting and at the school district meeting, that they wish there was another way to give voters better access without passing SB Two because they recognize the need for better access to voting. In fact, one of our townspeople even volunteered to champion a study committee to look at this idea of a charter, which I think is great. If there's another option, fantastic, because I recognize there was a tremendous amount of adversity to SB Two. So I am all for another, another option, absolutely. But passing SB Two could happen tonight. We could pass it here, give our fellow townspeople better access to voting next year. It's an immediate fix for this problem of unrepresented voters. We could still pursue this charter that's being talked about in the meantime. We can study it, propose it, have public hearings about it, and eventually pass it. But in the meantime, we have taken care of our friends and neighbors by giving them SB Two today. I recommend, I would suggest, we should improve access to voting while we take a look at this perhaps third option. My last and final thought is SB Two doesn't have to be permanent either. We can try it out for a few years, we can explore the idea of the charter. And then if we decide that SB Two is wrong, and maybe the charter isn't right either, or maybe the charter is right, we can just rescind SB Two in exactly the same manner we're trying to get it passed here today. Anybody who knows me knows that I'm a fierce advocate for what is right and for doing the right thing. So if I'm wrong about SB Two and it were to pass and it stinks, I don't want to keep it. I will lead the charge to rescind it. I love this town, I love the people, I like town meeting, and I will enjoy deliberative session. I want to see the town engaged, vibrant, and adequately funded with representation to vote. If SB Two is a failure, I'll lead the charge to rescind it in the same exact way that I'm asking for your yes vote tonight. Thank you for listening.
All right. Mister, Mrs. Gilman has moved that the town adopt the provisions of RSA forty colon thirteen, known as SB Two, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the town of Hopkinton on the second Tuesday of March. That was seconded by Lauren Clement. Before I turn this over to the select board for their response, I do want to note that the secret ballot voting on Article Three is closed. I would like for the assistant moderators to remove those ballots from the ballot box. They will begin secret ballot counting. Ballot counters who are out stationed with the ballot boxes for Article Five, please bring those up with your recycling bin. We will put the green ballots in the empty ballot box once that has happened. We will add a new poster, that ballot will remain open until eight thirty-six. The secret ballot for Article Four is still open until eight eighteen. As a reminder, the select board has asked to give a presentation about this petition warrant article. The three-minute time limit does not apply to the select board in their response. Again, I'm sure we'd all appreciate brevity, but you do use, Stephen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, uh, thank you for that presentation, Amanda. So I have some slides as well. There's some information on here that is the same as what you just heard from Amanda. So I'm going to try to skip over that and just give you the select board's position uh, so that you can then stand up and ask questions, if you have any afterward. Um, so this is submitted by petition, it requires a three-fifths vote to pass. The board did hold a public hearing on March Fourth. SB Two is, um, if it was passed, uh, we'd become a official ballot community and we'd have to follow RSA forty colon thirteen. Uh, this breaks it, the annual meeting into two sessions. Uh, the first is the, is called the deliberative session, it's, it's very comparable to what we're all doing here right now. The significant difference is that at the end of the discussion, there's no voting. Uh, and you have to wait usually around four or five weeks and then come back, uh, the second Tuesday in March. Uh, and you vote on everything on the ballot, just like you did when you elected officers and voted on the zoning amendments. Okay, so by law, deliberative sessions are in late January, early February. Uh, voting is by ballot, absentee ballots can be obtained on that Tuesday voting day. Uh, if the operating budget doesn't get a majority, then one option is the default budget. Uh, and just so people are aware of how the default budget is calculated, um, there's a, a specific definition in the law that we have to follow. It's the previous year's budget plus or minus debt service, that's like bond payments, contracts, other obligations previously incurred, uh, and then reduced by one-time expenses and salaries benefits for eliminated positions. Uh, that default budget is something that the select board puts together. Um, I just want to just pause here for a second, this is not on the slide, but the, the special meeting option, I mean, that is correct, that is an option that we have. Um, it is, uh, I think, a practically difficult one uh, because we'd have to schedule two more sessions, another deliberative and another ballot voting day. Uh, people would have the opportunity to, uh, make changes to the revised operating budget and then to vote down the revised operating budget again. And all that time, um, we would not know what the bottom line budget is for the town. And so it's a really long amount. And so it's a really long amount of time, potentially, before you actually know what you're, what you've approved us to spend. And so this, this slide is really where the, a summary of why we have not supported this. And if you've been following this debate for the town or the school, I think a lot of this will be pretty familiar. We have a really serious concern that if we make this change, there will be far fewer of you here for deliberative session. I don't think anybody, when they vote to switch to SB 2, assumes that the attendance will drop off. You know, I like to think of us as a very unique community. I think in many ways that we are. But I think when people, when they did, and those other communities, vote to go SB 2, I don't think they expected the turnout to drop the way that it did. I can't, I can't speak to why in those communities, people don't show up for deliberative session. I can tell you, though, that, you know, in my sort of day job, you know, I actually attend these meetings as an attorney for school districts or for towns. And a lot of those communities are SB 2. And so I look out into the audience and I'm, it's very different from what I'm seeing right now. It is a fraction of, of who I'm told used to go to the annual meeting. And so, yes, in some sense, that's anecdotal. But it's, the anecdotal evidence, as far as I'm aware, is pretty consistent. That the, the attendance does drop off pretty significantly. If that's the case, then the people that do show up, that small population that does show up at the deliberative, have a lot of power. They can make really, really significant changes to all those articles. And then when the voting session comes four weeks later, and there is usually high turnout at those, on the voting session, those voters are left with a yes or no choice. And that is a lot of our concern, is that it, it prevents the people, when you show up eventually on voting day, when you have that high turnout, your choices are binary. It's either a yes or a no. The, we also have concerns about being under a default budget. That can be, in some years, a really, really restrictive budget. And I think this, probably heard this a lot, particularly...
Mr. Whitley, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. We had a few ballot counters who went back to their seats. If you could please come back and finish the counting.
If, if we're operating under a default budget, it's possible that there's really significant expenditures that would have to be cut. And so, you know, that sort of, that sort of cutting is just not something that we look forward to. And when we put together the budgets every year, we try to be as lean as we possibly can. And so to, to present a default budget and have that be the one that we're operating under, it can, it could really lead to some harmful cuts. If, if the purpose of this petition is really about access, and I, we just heard Amanda speak about that a lot, you know, really eloquently. You know, I, I share that concern. I think we all do. You know, if anyone out there has an issue with access, you know, please come to us and talk to us and we will try to figure out ways to accommodate you so that you can be a part of this. If the challenge is the fact that this is happening on a Thursday evening, that's also something that we, the select board, have the power to change. You know, a few years ago, we actually switched it. You know, it used to be a Saturday and we changed it to this Thursday. You know, so far, it seems like that's been a really welcome change because attendance seems to have improved. You know, if that's the barrier, though, you know, come talk to us and we'll consider changing it again to something that works for more of the population. I think I've hit on all of the things that I wanted to touch on here. Yeah, so, Madam Moderator, that's, that's all I have for the select board's response. So thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Too, too fast. The, the last two slides here, the, this one you're looking at right now is voter turnout and it breaks it down by voting day and the business session. And you see the asterisk there. That's for the drive-through voting we had during the pandemic. And then the next slide just gives the vote results the previous times that SB 2 has, has come before this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. All right. As a reminder, the presentations have been given by the petitioner and the select board. We are now going to open it up to public comment. Please keep your time to three minutes. I do have a timer here. I will raise the yellow card when you have 30 seconds. Red card, Mr. McMillan, I know you get this. You're wearing our team jacket. Very nice. You get the soccer thing. We're good. All right. The ballot counting is happening for Article 3 right now. The ballot on Article 4 is open for two more minutes, but that's the minimum. Realistically, we will go a little bit longer to make sure we get through this debate. My phone is dying, so I borrowed the chairwoman's. All right. With that, let's open up to the floor.
Rick McMillan, 1584 Maple Street. And I have a, a couple of things, but first, and I will let some other people speak first. First, I have a question for the board. One of the things I just heard that what will change is that the timeline will change. So this meeting would be moved to probably, you know, end of January, beginning of February. And then we wouldn't actually be voting until three or four weeks after that. What's today's date?
Today is March 20.
March 20. Thank you. So if we had the deliberative meeting end of January, beginning of February, we'd be forced to actually vote a few weeks earlier on that information than it is now when you're finding out the information. Is that true?
You'd be voting on the second Tuesday in March.
You're right. So there's really no change in the time of year that you find out that information, right? That was your concern, that you wouldn't find out until too late, if I heard you correctly.
Would anyone on the select board care to respond?
Thank you. You know, we schedule this business session when we do because we try to accommodate for the school district also holding a, a business session. And so we could move this and we could actually have this business session occur, you know, before the Tuesday voting. And so that, with, this date is not something that's set in stone and we can move it. If we switch to SB 2, there's a four- to five-week period of time, by law, in between when deliberative session happens and when you vote on that second Tuesday. And that's not something that we would have the power to change because that's in state law.
Well, so just to be clear early, you said three to four weeks later. Now you're saying four to five weeks later, you're involved in legality and you have the knowledge on this. Is it four to five? Is it five weeks? Is it three weeks? I'm just trying to figure out when I would have to be here from wherever I am, as are other people that have driven from Carolina and have jobs, trying to figure out when I would have to be here to vote.
And, and it, it's a good que, it's a good question. It's, it changes every year because the way the law is set up, it's not a specific date. It's, the way the law is set up, it's, it says it's between two Saturdays and those two Saturdays float every year. And so sometimes it's four weeks, other times it's five, maybe sometimes it's three. But that's generally the time period between deliberative and the voting day. If, if we were SB 2, the select board would pick. There's a week, there's a seven-day period where we pick when deliberative is going to happen. And so if we do it at the beginning of that seven-week period, maybe it's a longer separation. If we do it at the end of that seven-day period, maybe it's closer to three or four weeks. But that's generally the time period between the deliberative and the voting day.
So, so you have the ability to do that?
Do you want another follow-up?
That's great. And it doesn't sound like that's going to inhibit anything. And yes, I do agree, and I've done research on SB 2 and the population of people attending this will be reduced. However, the number of voters is likely, and you've seen these meetings, if you've compared to town voting, the number of people that own property and pay taxes in this town, that's likely to double or triple the number of people that get to vote on all of these issues that affect all of the people in the town of Hockington. Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder, try to ask all questions upfront and not engage in debate back and forth. Ms. Metcalf, I think you're up next.
Amy Metcalf, 150 Woodland Drive, Kentuckahque. And for those that were at the school district meeting, I apologize for telling you the same thing, but that's what I'm going to do. So I oppose SB 2. That's why I'm up here. Because I think it'll further divide us here in Hockington. People come together and listen to each other and this is, that's the foundation of the, of a community and a democracy. SB 2 takes away one of the few places where people of differing viewpoints and party affiliations gather together, say hello, look each other in the eye, and have social exchanges. It's a place where community members discuss, share their voice, ask questions, get clarification, and get facts. Amend articles, vote based on the same information that we have all heard together. Taking away town meeting will further the problem of voters voting based on different information, misinformation, and without hearing all sides of the debate. This will lead to further division rather than unification. And we've talked about the deliberative session. It's true, it doesn't work. People don't show up. And I did my own research on this and called a bunch of towns that are SB 2 and all of them said that the attendance drops significantly. Some of them say it plummets. People just don't show up. And if someone, I mean, it makes sense to me because if someone opts not to spend time at town meetings where their presence is tied to a vote, they will not attend a deliberative session. There are two days a year where we meet together and vote, town and school meeting. They occur in March every year. I ask the people prioritize these times because attending community, town meeting is extremely informative and important to the healthy functioning of the community. I do agree with making accommodations for those that have due to disability or age. And if there's some other ways out there that we can, you know, work out the system, I'm happy to look at it and I would, I think it would be great to discuss those. But today, we have to vote on SB 2 or not SB 2. Thank you.
Amelia Feuner, 277 Pinewood Drive. I'm losing my voice, so please bear with me. I'm here to support SB 2. I'm here alone tonight because my husband is at home with our three kids. He fed them dinner. He's getting, getting them ready for bed and school tomorrow. I'm here to ask for your support. I believe everyone in this town deserves a voice. Every person that receives a tax bill in the mail from the town office deserves to have a vote. A man who can't ambulate out of his house still pays taxes to this town. A working, single parent who works nights still has to pay their taxes. An enlisted soldier serving our country, fighting for your right to vote, still pays his taxes to this town and he deserves to vote. So does everyone. 4,500 registered voters in this town couldn't even fit in this gym to cast their vote. This is why SB 2 is important. I also want to add that I will still show up to, to the deliberative meetings, but that's, but the difference is my husband can still vote when he's home taking care of our kids. This doesn't need to be forever, but let's test the waters and see how it goes. Thank you.
You ready?
I'm so ready.
Okay.
Lauren, ready.
Ken Watson, 27 Clark Lane. Couple of points on Mr. Whitley's presentation. The comment about the town meetings that you go to as a lawyer, very anecdotal. We have no idea what the population of those towns are. You say they decrease significantly. Could be 100 people in that town and used to be 100 people showed up and now there's 75. Don't know. The other thing is, the voting session, there is not a separate voting session, the deliberative session, and then the second Tuesday of March. We all go and vote as we do now. There are just different items or additional items that were decided in the deliberative session on that ballot. So it is not an additional meeting. Excuse me. Fortunately, I'm not losing my voice, or unfortunately for you. Anyways, so there is not, it is still the single vote on the second Tuesday. Couple of other things. We have, we strive in this town to educate children, young adults, and then we strive to send them off to college. They can't vote. They're not here. They're in college, so they can't vote. Second group that we disenfranchise from this, as has been touched on by two of the people up here, is those people that are fighting for your freedom to be here. My son is on an aircraft carrier off the coast of China right now. He's not here. But you don't care whether he, what he says.
Remember not to ascribe motive or feeling, Mr. Watson.
I'm not disposing, disparaging anybody. You're saying you don't care what the people can't, who aren't here have to say. That is your point.
Okay. There has, all right, no pause right now. Let's get through the parliamentary part of this. There's been a call to question. Who was that made by? I just, who seconded? Right, okay. So what we will do is when I call the vote, if you would like to call the question, that means, Mr. McMillan, did you just get up after someone asked to call the question? Okay, well, I see who was last in line when the question was called. If you want to call the question, that means only people who were in line when the question was called can speak before we vote on this article, on Article 6, you will say aye. If you do not want the question to be called and you would like more people to have the opportunity to speak on Article 6, you will say nay. Does everyone understand what we're about to do? Great question. If there are people in the auditorium, please come down. I will give you two minutes in case those five people are really loud. Someone, can you run up and just see if anyone's coming? Anyone? Perfect. Thank you. Okay. We'll go over this again. If you want to call the question, that means debate would end after our final speaker in line. Then you will say yea. If you would not like to, you will say nay when I call the question. Do we have results that we can read in the inter? Okay, while we're waiting. You have a point of order? I know, I'm going to make you say the words. Yeah.
So if I'm understanding what's going on here, is this what happened at the school board?
Mr. McMillan? There we go.
I, I'm just trying to clarify this and understand how this whole town meeting thing works, even though I've been here for decades.
Learning curve is high. I get it.
Yeah, yeah. So is, so I'm understanding what's going on here. Is this an opportunity for people to prohibit other people whose views they may disagree with from speaking?
I would not frame it that way because it looks like there's a mixed group in line.
Yeah.
And it looks like whoever called the question would like to end the debate. I don't know what side they're on or not. They want to end the debate after the person in line. Voters can decide they agree with that or not.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
You are so very welcome. Would anyone like to hear any results? Okay. So on Article 3, which as a reminder, was the Septage Lagoon Bond, the pink ballot, the first vote you took tonight, with 497 votes yes and 30 no votes, the article passes. That is 94% of the total 527 ballots that were cast. I do need to add an important housekeeping note. There were two ballots that were put in, just the whole yes/no ballot. I can't count those. I don't know what your intent was. So when you vote, please make sure you rip the ballot in half and only put in one word. Okay? Great. I believe the select board was going to make a motion.
Want to restrict reconsideration.
All right. Mr. Whitley moves. All right, Mr. Whitley moves to restrict reconsideration on Article Three. Is there a second? Seconded by Sabrina Dunlap. So, what this move is, if you would like to restrict reconsideration on Article Three, you will vote "aye." If you do not wish to restrict reconsideration, and you want to be able to bring it back up later, not tonight, but in the future, you would say "no." Okay, all those in favor of restricting? They're, they're here. Yeah, it was very small. Thank you. Um, so all those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article Three, say "aye." All those opposed, say "nay." The motion passes and reconsideration is restricted on Article Three. Now, we'll go back to the point of order motion. Someone called the question, so if you are in favor of calling the question and ending debate after not Mr. Blamey weren't in line, or is that your name? I'm sorry. Yep, you weren't in line, so after the person in front of you, then you will vote "aye." If you do not wish to call the question, and you would like debate to continue, you will vote "nay." Everyone, good. Thumbs up? You know what you're doing? Great. All those in favor of calling the question, say "aye." All those opposed, say "nay." All right, that's not necessary at all. Not necessary. Please step away from the mic before you scream. I'd like to hear for the rest of my life. All right, I'm gonna do it again, because I think there was a little bit of a bias. Steve, can you make sure you shut off that mic? Thanks. All right, all those in favor of calling the question, say "aye." All those opposed, say "nay." Are you guys kidding me? All right, we're gonna do a division vote then, because I can't tell. So, what that means, y'all are gonna learn a lot about parliamentary politics, is ballot counters are gonna go to each section. We're gonna have ballot counter pair two, one, here. Ballot counter pair two in the middle here. Ballot counter pair three over there. Similarly, divide the bleachers in three parts. If you are sitting in the middle, maybe underneath the A of the hawk, you're gonna wanna scooch to one side, so I know which part of the bleacher you're in. Yeah, that's you. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Strack. Move over, and your neighbor. Just split up, please. I know, you're buddies. It's cool. Similarly, on this side, gentleman in the red flannel, just make sure you're Karen. Make sure you're sitting on one clear side. Okay? Ballot counters, when I say, all those in favor say, or stand up, or if you are unable to stand, raise your hand so that we can see it. You will count those people standing or raising their hands for a yes vote. Then I will have those folks sit. You will stand for nay vote, and the ballot counters will count that. When you have your count, jot it down, bring it to the assistant moderators, and we will tally this vote on calling the question. If you are standing over here, please come scooch in front of one of these sections. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. That's great. Um, you're gonna wanna sit down for a second. I see your order. I know who you are. I got you. If you wanna just sit back in your seats, you can get back in order. All right, ballot counter pair number one over here, Alita Beth. You're gonna do, these folks on the floor, if you're standing, yeah, like kneeling. Good job, Billy Chapin. Way to take initiative there. That's great. Just raise your hand if you're standing. I'm, I don't want anybody falling, please. Okay, Billy, you can stand. You're okay. And then you can raise your hand. Your wife's a teacher. You got this. All right. Alita Beth, you're gonna do, these folks, see Ms. Amy here, all the way over, okay? You feel good about that? Feeling good? And you know what? Since we got standards here, just raise your hand, please. Only one, though, okay? Let's not cheat. Debbie, Natalie, you got this crowd, okay? Y'all, just raise your hand. That's fine. It's gonna take a minute. There's a lot of you. Ballot counters in the back, Elizabeth, Norm. You got these two sections, okay? From A to the wall. And Tricia and Nancy Jo, you've got from W to D. Feel good? Okay. Erin Catherine, you've got from E, Ms. Ashton, to the wall. Everyone in a place where your vote can be counted. Okay, raise one hand if you would like to vote yes on calling the question on Article Six. Leave it there until I tell you to put it down, please. Thank you. It's good exercise. The ballot box for Article Five, no, Article Four, has closed, and so has Article Five. How exciting. Put your hands down. Put your hands down. I got you. I will count the select board. Keep holding them there. This is great. All right, Section One, you can put your hand down. You're good? Okay. Don't put any other hands up if we haven't called the nay vote yet. Section One, you can put your hand down if you voted yes. You can put your hand down. Natalie, Debbie, are you good with the count? Great, everyone on the floor can put your hand down. Rest. We're not nay voting yet, though. Nancy Jo, Trish, are you done in your section? Have you reported your yes, or do you have it written down? I just don't want you to forget. Brilliant. All right, Catherine, Erin, you good in your section? Great. Elizabeth, Norm, you good in your section? All right, everybody put your hands down. Doesn't that feel good? Okay. Now, if you would like to vote "nay" on Article Six, on calling the question on Article Six, you're gonna put your hand up now. Please don't vote twice. Please don't put two hands up, all right? Hold them up. Hold them. Wow. I can call it right now, but those are some noisy nays. Well done. Good projecting. Keep them up until I say you can put them down, please. Good over here. Great, good over here. You can set your hand down if you're on the floor on this side. We're good over here. Everyone on the floor can put your hand down. Good. Norm, Elizabeth, you get your section? Good. Yeah, raise it real high. No itching your nose at this time, please. It's too confusing. Like I heard something. All right, bleacher counters, are you good? All right, ballot counters, please come. Bring your ballots up to be tallied. While we're holding, if someone from the fire department could report if there's any more ice cream left, I'm sure we're all curious. What? Five.
Five.
Five yeses. All right, anybody who's standing in line, please resume and be in the same order you were in. We're missing one. I know, I see. And thank you, though. I appreciate the looking out. Good work. Mr. Barnes, if you want to resume your space in line, I'd suggest now's a good time. While we're waiting, everybody give it up for our ballot counters. Aren't they great? Good stuff. I'm just gonna add them together. And then we will report the results. All right, with four hundred and twenty-three voting in the affirmative and eighty-seven voting in the negative, the ayes have it, and we will call the question. All those who were standing in line before, it's not the applause. This is gonna take us forever, okay? Um, all those who were standing in line may have their three minutes to speak. We'll start with Ms. Blamey.
Frances Blamey, Bassett Mill Road. So, the main argument that I have heard opposed to SB2 is that if you give everyone the right to vote, if people do not attend the meeting or the deliberative session and have a discussion and vote immediately afterward, they will not be informed despite the deliberative session which takes the place of the town meeting. However, as we saw at the school meeting last week, someone called the question even though only three people had spoken, and there were people walking to the mic. And the verbal vote did not include the people in the other rooms. We just saw this right now, although we were fortunate enough to be able to get the people from the other rooms to come in to be able to vote on calling the question. And we did have more than three people who were able to speak, but we did have more people who wanted to talk. And if the whole point is to have a discussion, then why are we cutting people off? So, would it? So, please, if you see me on the street, don't tell me that discussion is what's important. I just don't understand why you want to exclude people from voting. If there had been SB2, then the whole thing with the date change for the school board would not have precluded people from voting. They could have gotten absentee ballots. So, please, ask yourself what you are afraid of. If you are afraid that somebody who votes SB2, yes on SB2, might vote differently from you, then that is not the town that I thought I moved into. I thought that I moved into a community where everybody treated each other with respect, where everybody wanted to be everyone else to have a seat at the table. And that's the community I really want to live in. So, please vote yes on SB2.
No. No, we're not gonna boo. Come on. That's not us.
Hi, my name is Ken Barnes. I live at 154 Cedar Street. I've lived there for thirty years. I have to tell you first that I just love this town, and I love living here and participating in a community where people who differ on so many different issues can come together and be together, debate the issues, and, how do you like this? Still maybe like each other. We still get along. That is what community is all about to me. And I have to tell you, I do understand the rationale given by the proponents of SB2 about access to, uh, to being here. Not everyone can be here now. Not everyone can be here, uh, on the deliberation de- meeting day, uh, under SB2. Um, seems to me that that's gonna be a similar problem, uh, for the deliberative session of SB2 as it is here. The people that the proponents of SB2 are concerned about, who are too elderly or frail or have childcare, all those others things, which are serious, uh, legitimate concerns, but if they can't get here for the town meeting deliberation, then they probably have the same issue preventing them from getting to the deliberative session. So, I'm not sure, uh, how, uh, this, their, their idea really, really helps the folks that should be able to participate, who would, might want to participate. And if, if the only aspect of the SB2 proponents is to have everybody have the right to vote, then you lose the opportunity to understand what you're voting for, to be at the deliberative session. If they don't come to the deliberative session and only go vote, everybody goes and votes, then there's no discussion, there's no debate, there's no informed voting. And I value that informed voting greatly, and I hope we continue it. So, I urge everybody to vote "no" on SB2. Thank you.
Neil Irvin, Main Street. I rise in opposition to this question, urge my fellow citizens to vote "no." We've heard a lot about anecdotal evidence, and I will share with you real-world experience. I am a town administrator in an SB2 town. Our deliberative session was held in the middle of January. We had twenty residents attend. Our voting session on March 11th, the second Tuesday in March, we had eight hundred and fifty votes cast. In the four weeks in between, we had three mailers hit every mailbox in town full of lies and misinformation. The outcome? I have a default budget for the second year in a row. That means I am running the town on twenty twenty-three dollars, not twenty twenty-five dollars. There was talk about we could take up a special town meeting. That's true. We could have another town meeting, special town meeting, for the operating budget. Not any of the other individual warrant articles. What does that mean? That means that the warrant article that I proposed this year for paving dollars that was rejected cannot be readdressed. I will not be repaving roads in 2025. I had a warrant article for the reassessment that is mandated by state law every five years. I understand we all just went through the reassessment. That was going to be paid with unassigned fund balance. Zero impact on the tax rate. That was voted down. I now have to find a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in my operating budget to stay within the state law and do a reassessment. These are the realities of SB2, and I urge you all to vote "no." Thank you.
Janet Ward, 82 Watchtower Road. And, um, I just want to say that I am here to speak against SB2, as I did at the school district meeting, because the same problems, um, that, uh, are true for, uh, the, uh, town meeting, um, are true of deliberative sessions. Not everybody can attend. That's just a fact of human life. And I know, and some of you referred to this, there is an effort underway to try to make accessibility, uh, better for those of a certain age or, uh, disabled or with children. So, I'm happy to know of that. But in the meantime, because so many people eloquently explain the problems with SB2, I'll focus on the problem that scares me the most. And that is, um, at an SB2 deliberative session, warrant articles can be amended but not removed. And that is, at an SB2 deliberative session, warrant articles can be amended but not removed. Ballot voting then follows on a separate day. Between the deliberative session and ballot voting, voters may receive unintentional or intentional misinformation, and there is no opportunity to immediately discuss and correct such misinformation before voting takes place. This is of great concern to me, and I think it should be for everyone in this room. And I urge you to vote against SB2. Thank you.
Kate Kynak, 293 Main. Now, we are all here at our town meeting tonight because we know our votes are counted here in Hopkinton. It matters if we show up. And in towns with SB2, the turnout at the deliberative sessions is often low because voters do not vote on those warrants then and there. People may feel it doesn't matter if they show up or not. The facts might be clearly laid out in these sessions, but very few citizens are there to hear them. That means that SB2 situations with that four to five week waiting period can allow misinformation and disinformation to spread to voters without exposure to the facts. So you may agree with me, you may disagree with me, but you can hear me now, tonight, and you could hear the other citizens now, tonight, some who agreed with me, some who disagreed with me. And so you can, we all get exposed to the information and can make our own decisions based on exposure to these differing opinions and to the actual facts and not by being unfortunately influenced by intentional or unintentional misinformation. I hope we in this room will choose to vote no on SB2. Thank you.
All right. That was the final comment. Looks like Mr. McMillan is rising for a point of order, is my guess. Yes, sir?
Rick McMillan, again, with my jacket that I got to have the privilege of coaching you with.
Only a couple of years ago.
You were, yeah.
It was recent.
Couple of years ago. You haven't changed a bit. With that said, I'm curious, because once again, being part of this thing and having been to the school board meeting and now this meeting, the reason that I jumped up to get in line was I was hoping to avoid the situation that identically happened at the school board meeting, where there were four or five people in line opposing something. And once they were lined up, it got off.
Question was called, and there's no more speaking for. Do you have a point of order?
So, so my question is, should we have four or five people with our petition?
That's not how it works. The question was called.
Yeah.
Do you have a point of order? Do you have a motion you'd like to make or a question?
I would, I would like to make a motion that somehow there's a way, I don't know how to word it, so that the people that came here to get all their opinions have more of a chance to vote.
The body has voted that they would like to call the question and that they've ready to vote. It was a fairly strong vote as we did the standing count.
Yeah.
The body has spoken.
Yeah.
So no, there isn't another motion that's in order for you right now. Understand your feelings, you wish the debate was longer, this but control, and they decided that they wanted to call the question.
If I --
And you can't filibuster the meeting, okay?
Okay. If I, if I did want to have another comment, I should have stood just off.
Should have been standing, yes.
So I would need to be there and let people go in front of me until I wanted my last chance. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm kinda along the same lines here.
You have the same point of order?
Not, not the same, but I was sitting over here, there's a gentleman that stood up, waited for four people to stand in line, and then called the question. And then you said that there's a good mix of people standing in line?
I, I saw a mix of people, there were five people. I don't know how people are gonna speak, they had not spoken before. There were five people. I do not determine when someone from the public calls the question. The question was called, I made the vote, you decided as a body to move forward. I understand you're disappointed with that decision. But now we're gonna move into the voting mode, okay? This is the last article that is required to have a secret ballot by statute. We will go with the same process. Stop clapping, Ken, knock it off. All right? So, on Article 6, the adoption of official ballot referendum form of meeting, I'm going to call the secret ballot counters, your ballot counters, forward to get situated. Everyone else, please stay seated until I tell you it's time to get up. I won't comment on Mr. Houston again. He's looking at me like he wants me to, but I'm not going to. All right? I'm not gonna specify, they're both looking at me. So this ballot is going to be orange. If you would like to vote yes on Article 6, the adoption of official ballot referendum form of meeting, otherwise known as SB2, you will tear your ballot in half. Only put the half that says yes in the wooden ballot box if you would like to vote yes on Article 6. If you would like to vote no on Article 6, tear your ballot in half and put only the no in the wooden ballot box. Everyone understand? I feel like fourth time's a charm, we're gonna get this, it's gonna be great. All right, our ballot counter is situated, almost, we're going. Once I call everybody in, when it looks like there has been a reasonable amount of time to vote, we're gonna put all of those orange ballots in that big wooden ballot box. It will be open for one hour. I will remind folks, there will be an orange poster, and you can vote if you haven't had time to do that yet. Don't get up yet, Mrs. Parker. Very important announcement before we go into the voting mode, there's no more ice cream. I'm so sorry. I know. I've been told I have to pick something, I don't know what I'm picking. It's a raffle ticket, great. I'm so sorry if I picked you or didn't pick you. Okay, if you have the red coupon that says number 2620319, you are the winner, come get your fire blanket. I don't wanna give it out either. Yeah, I'll say it again, Suddy, it is 2620319. All right. Yes. I already said that, but the chairwoman would like to remind you, if you would like to vote no on Article 6, you put a no in. If you wanna vote yes on Article 6, you put the yes in. Again, I can't give you another ballot if you do it wrong, and if you put the whole ballot in, I cannot count that, okay? All right. Now you may get up, even though some people didn't wait, Mr. Myler causing trouble. Like he's never voted before. All right, it is 8:58, this ballot box will be open until 9:58. All right, another important notice, while there may not be ice cream, the senior class is still selling concessions. Also, since the first winner didn't come up, I'm picking a second winner. Oh, it's Mr. Wallace? Fine. 2620319, was that anybody's number? No. Okay. We'll try again. Oh, no, 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 no. 2620237, does anyone have that number? Just raise your hand if you do. I'm really great. Felt sorry, I take it. All right, third time is a charm, I'm not calling any more numbers after this. Check your ticket, everybody. I quit.
All right, seeing that most people have had the time to cast your ballot, I'm going to ask everybody to find your seats again, and I'm going to ask the select board to also find their seats. All right, folks, let's get settled. It's nine twelve. My children are going home for bed. I'm very jealous. Madam Chairman, where are you? We're just waiting for one select board chair. Unacceptable, Madam Chair. Vote earlier. Good looking out. Yeah. All right, everybody settle back into your seats. Stop talking. The more you talk, the longer we're here. Thank you so much. Good job. Okay. So as a reminder, the ballot on Article Six, SB two, will be open until eight fifty-eight. Okay? Nine fifty-eight. I wrote it wrong. See, it's so late. Thanks, Christine. Good looking out. Before we move on to Article Seven, I am going to read the results for Article Four, Wastewater Lagoons. As a reminder, that was your yellow ballot. It was a little while ago. With four hundred and seventy-nine yes votes and forty-two no votes, the article passes with ninety-two percent of the vote. I will recognize Stephen for a motion.
Make a motion to restrict reconsideration of Article Four.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Donahoe. Okay, all those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article Four, say aye. All of those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And I see Miss Ekstrom is at the mic for a motion.
Second, yep. So Becky Ekstrom, seventeen eighty Boundtree Road. Miss Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to special order Article Twelve to now before the vote.
You mean before the discussion on Article Seven, the budget. Got it. All right, that motion is ordered. Is there a second? Want, just want to be raise your hand. All right, Trish Lambert, Road. Galloping Hill. Got it. Thank you. All right. The motion is moved and seconded. If you are in favor of moving Article Twelve, the rescind pay-by-bag and discontinue special revenue fund article to now before the discussion on Article Seven, the operating budget, you will vote aye. If you're not in favor of moving that, vote nay. Everybody understand what we're doing? Good? Great. All right, all those in favor of special ordering Article Twelve, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Great. Okay, the art, the motion passes and we will jump to Article Twelve. Everybody here caught up? We're good? Just flip through those slides, Neil. All right, so Article Twelve, the rescind pay-by-bag and discontinue special revenue fund article. The motion is made by Thomas Lipoma and seconded by Sabrina Dunlap. The Chair recognizes Thomas Lipoma for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town, wait. I was almost ready. I move that the town completely end the pay-by-bag program adopted by Article Nineteen at the March two thousand and ten town meeting. If rescinded, the program will end April first, twenty twenty-five. Further to discontinue the pay-by-bag special revenue fund created in twenty-ten effective April first, twenty twenty-five. Said funds with accumulated interest to date of withdrawal are to be transferred to the town's general fund. I would thank you very much, Madam Moderator. So. Yeah, so green bags. I wanted to go through a quick, brief history and then talk about some of the issues we faced with green bags and why we are specifically now looking to rescind the program. So just a quick history, starting with Webster joining the transfer station agreement in nineteen seventy-five. It's interesting, recycling and reducing waste has always been kind of part of the reason why they joined, and it's always been an important part of Hockington. In twenty-ten, the town voted to implement the pay-by-bag program. Over the years, it's been voted on to rescind it multiple times. It's always been very close. I think it's also worth noting that when it was initially implemented, it was also a very close vote. In twenty-fourteen, after several years of the green by bag program being implemented, the select board had a select committee to evaluate solid waste. This looked at the green bag, the green bag program specifically, as well as other issues of waste in town. One of the specific, I'm sure there's multiple people from that committee in, in the audience now, which is great, but one of the initial recommendations was to evaluate curbside pickup, which is again also a complicated issue with our waste stream. In twenty-twenty, the select board voted to halt the enforcement of green bags due to COVID. This also extended to in-town haulers. And then in twenty-twenty-three, the town voted at town meeting to allow the select board to set green bag prices. As we started to evaluate those green bag prices, we started to also see some other issues with the program. And then twenty-twenty-four, the town voted to amend the joint transfer station agreement. So looking at the purpose of the green bag program, the pay-by-bag program, there's a couple, there's a couple of main purposes to it. The, the main one is to incentivize residents to use less by wasting less. So ideally, instead of having the entire town pay through waste through, through taxes, general taxes from your property bill, you pay for what you use. So it moves it over into a effectively a use fee. Each individual is responsible for the cost of what they're disposing. This reduces the property tax burden because you're no longer paying for those transfer station fees in your property tax. You're instead paying them for them through, through the, the bag prices. But it also reduces the total tax burden because ideally, if you're, if the individual is using less, then also less waste is going to the transfer station, which means we're paying less as a whole in transfer fees. And then also a nice kind of side benefit of it is that budget expense on the line item in the budget turns into a net revenue that's able to be used to do things like improve the transfer station. So in, a lot of people have a lot of different opinions about the value of a pay-by-bag program. A couple of different studies have been done, both in New Hampshire and Vermont. In general, they show a pretty significant reduction in waste in towns that implement, that correctly implement a, a green bag program. So I think it's worth looking at the general waste pathway that happens with most towns or basically every other town that does a pay-by-bag program. So there's, there's two main ways it happens. The resident, it always starts with the resident buying the bags. They put their trash into the bags. And then you either have a commercial hauler doing curbside pickup, or you have a town transfer station. In pretty much every other transfer station that we look at, where they have a pay-by-bag program, they either don't accept commercial waste, or they have a curbside pickup. But pretty much to simplify this and make sure that all the residents are using the program the same. So our town is very different. This is a general diagram of our waste stream. So first of all, we have the complicated issue where we have the joint transfer station with Webster. So we have the two different towns that have the two different ordinances or the same ordinance, but the two different requirements on the green bags. So then those residents can either use the green bags or not use the green bags. And then those bags either can go to commercial haulers, they can go to in-town haulers, they could be dropped off at the transfer station, or they can go to an outside transfer station through a commercial hauler. So there's a lot of different ways that this can go. It's important to note that all of these different pathways make it extremely different to, difficult to analyze how well we're doing as a whole. It makes it really hard to tell where the trash is going, how much trash we're generating, how much green bags we're using, and how much trash is going out of town. I do want to pause here and just give a shout out to MT Trash. They're one of the most consistent users and haulers of green bags. They've been one of the most consistent rule followers. They've been very active with this, with the select board. So I definitely want to just give them a shout out. They've been very helpful throughout this process. So with keeping in mind that the waste stream is extremely difficult to analyze because we don't know things like how much, how, how many Webster residents are using curbside pickup. It's very difficult to try to figure out what percentage of users are doing different things. But looking at a couple of different metrics and then also looking at the report from the two thousand fourteen Select Committee, this is the general breakdown of the town waste usage. So in town in Hockington, we have about sixty-two percent of residents utilize curbside pickup, and that could be either with in-town haulers like MT Trash. It could also be out-of-town haulers, and that could be with green bags or not green bags. Then we have about twenty-six percent of residents use the transfer station while not using green bags. And then we have about eleven percent, almost twelve percent that do correctly use the green bags and take their trash to the transfer station. So just quickly looking at our current waste, this is, it's very similar to the breakdown of haulers and green bag usage. It's very hard to estimate. One of the best ways to do it is to look at generally on average, what each resident should be producing based on averages, both in the Northeast and nationally. So if you were to just look at that and you're going to say, across Hockington and Webster, how much waste should we be producing? It should be somewhere between fifty-eight hundred tons and sixty-eight hundred tons a year. However, we have significantly less of that actually going to our hopper. So why is this different than other towns? The main thing is we just don't quite understand the breakdown rate of all of the different places where all this trash goes. We have no idea where curbside pickup is taking the waste. We know that the in-house, in-town haulers do take it to the transfer station. There's multiple other haulers that don't. And so we just, we just don't know. So when we look at the success of the green bag program and how successful it is at its goal of reducing waste, one of the best ways to look at it, you can't really look at the waste going to the transfer station because of all those complicating factors. The best thing to look at is really the recycling rate. It's not a great metric, but it's a pretty good proxy for how, how much is going into recycling because we're not wasting as much. So you can see here that in twenty-ten, after the program was implemented, it did, it did spike by about ten percent. But then in the following years, it did decrease. This graph ends in twenty-fourteen because after twenty-fourteen, we changed the metrics of how we report recycling. And so we couldn't really combine the metrics. So this is the, the best we have. So when we look at some of the issues with the actual implementation of the green bag, there's a lot of different factors. One of the main problems was price setting. So when, in twenty, in two thousand and ten, when the town first voted to implement green bags, they set a requirement, the town set a requirement that any change in the bag price could only be done at town meeting. That means that the select board couldn't change prices as the transfer station fees increased or to match any other, other, any other reasons to incentivize reducing waste. So there was no increase for ten-plus years, and that was kind of a problem because it made that we couldn't implement, we couldn't use those fees to implement other things that might help with the implementation of the program. We couldn't raise more money through green bags to do any other type of enforcement. Talking with some of the transfer station attendants and some of the people involved at the very beginning, it was clear there was a lot of animosity at the actual transfer station. The residents refusing to use the bags, residents having arguments with the transfer station employees. The transfer station is currently relatively understaffed, so adding in the requirement that they manage checking individual stickers for individual bags going to the hopper is really difficult. It's something that's doable, maybe, maybe once, a couple of times, but ongoing, it's a really difficult thing to do. And it also adds in a level of animosity that, that I don't think anyone's really hoping for. So when we look at how this goes forward, it was very clear that there's a need for active enforcement. We can't just say everyone's going to do it. We can't just put a sign up and say you need to. That's been shown that doesn't work and that a lot of people don't want to follow the rules. And so when we started to look at what it would, it would be required in order to do active enforcement, it seemed like we'd likely have to hire either a part-time or a full-time person to help enforce some of these rules, resulting in somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars in expenses to hire and manage in attendant. When we first started looking at changing the bag prices, we also were looking at these implementation issues, and this was brought up and at the public hearing, there's strong opposition to the enforcement of the green bags, which is part of why we're here. So in terms of the recent efforts, so outside of those fifteen-plus years, the recent efforts that the select board has done in order to look at the green bag program, the first thing we did was looking to end the joint transfer station committee with Webster. We share the transfer station with Webster. They're responsible for their twenty-five percent of the fees. But we had a fifty-fifty split on the transfer station committee, which sets the rules for what we do there. That's problematic because Webster's fairly against the green bag program. And so when we wanted to try to implement changes to the transfer station, that fifty-fifty split made it difficult to make any sort of changes. We also worked really hard with Webster to update the transfer station ordinance, looking at tipping fees, looking at different fees for all the different things going in there, and then also broadly looking at other issues at the transfer station. We updated the tipping fees, and then we also passed the warrant article to change the bag price. That's when we started to evaluate the bag price and how we'd look at the enforcement. We had those hearings. And that's when we met pretty strong and for, opposition to enforcing the green bag program. We also, throughout this process, in the recent efforts, there's been a lot of questions around the actual use of the transfer station. There's been a lot of anecdotal evidence, comments from people talking about out-of-town people coming to the transfer station, people not having stickers. And so the select board also had a pretty strong drive to enforce resident stickers. We pushed getting resident stickers out to people. We had a lot of notices, public hearings about it. And then we also had several weekends where we stood at the transfer station, both handing out stickers, but then also enforcing the stickers to make sure that no one else was coming into the transfer station. Then we started to look at the review of the resources we'd be needed to enforce the green bags, and that's why we're here now. All of this takes a tremendous amount of time, and because everything more or less has to be done in conjunction with Webster, it makes everything pretty difficult. From the initial public hearing, it was pretty clear that raising additional funds to have additional tendents to enforce green bag rules at the transfer station wasn't popular. And so that's why we're making the motion to rescind the program. If we do decide to keep the program, we would likely have to actually hire an additional attendant to enforce the, the program.
I got like a few rows done on that one. Thanks, Thomas. All right. With those opening remarks, I will open it up to the floor. If you would like to ask a question or provide comment on Article Twelve, please step up to the mic and say your name and address.
Hi, good evening. My name is Meredith Hatfield, and I live at sixty-eight Apple Tree Lane. I urge my fellow citizens to vote against this and to not give up on green bags. Two things that Mr. Lipoma said is getting rid of this will increase taxes. And if it costs money to hire staff for enforcement, which shame on us for not wanting to follow rules, but if it costs money to hire staff for enforcement, how does that compare to how much our taxes are going to go up for taking more trash to a landfill? He also said, the problem is we have not correctly implemented it. We have amazingly smart people in this town. Like, we have to be able to figure this out. I do want to thank the selectmen for doing some enforcement on stickers. We need to stop people from out of town and out of either Hockington or Webster from using our transfer station because that also increases our taxes. My last point is about PFAS. We just spent a lot of money tonight cleaning up PFAS. Landfills are one of the Landfills are one of the biggest sources of PFAS in the state. And it is going into our water bodies and our drinking water. So what we can do is put less trash in landfills and stop poisoning our water and our soil. And we, we've got to get on this. We, we're out of time and I would urge you to please vote against this and let's keep trying. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Christopher Gross, Checkerberry Lane. I would disagree with one point that was just made is that is it will not increase our taxes. Hiring someone will increase our taxes.
If you can just speak into the mic, I'm having a hard time hearing. It's okay.
So the green bag program is a failed program and it's run its course. It, it is also a regressive tax that hurts middle and lower income households while giving tax benefits to those with higher income values. Let me explain. In a perfect world, let's say Hopkinton with 2,100 houses. Saw 100% use of green bags and no one used a hauler service. And each home used on an average of two green, large green bags per week. That would be about $182 a year for the average home in green bags. Let's assume that Hopkinton made 100% profit on those green bags, which they do not, but let's pretend they did. That would, that would generate an estimated revenue of $382,000, which would have a tax impact of about 27 cents per thousand of assessed value. So on a $200,000 house, I don't know there are any of those, but on a $200,000 house, they would save $54 in taxes, but they would spend. 182 on green bags in a given year. And on a $600,000 house, a home would save $162, but spend $182. Anyone with a value over $675,000 would make a profit. Their taxes would go down more than they spent on the green bags. There's been talk about raising the price of the green bags and this would just exacerbate the problem. I have the numbers, but I'm not going to go through them. So again, this is just a hidden tax. We're gonna pay it one way or the other, but it's actually cheaper if we do not buy the green bags. And to all of the people who thinks that this helps the environment. Keeping the green bag program alive will add an additional 218,400 green bags to our landfill every year. That's 2 million unneeded extra plastic bags in landfills every 10 years, just from Hopkinton. Thank you.
Brad Watson, 226 Crawl Road. I've always been cognizant of the environment. I've always recycled. We take care of all the plastic in one, in the cans, the bottles. Everything cardboard, paper, we were doing this before we had green bags. If you use a green bag and it has it, whatever you put in it in the garbage can, if it has any moisture, when you pick it up, it's gonna dribble all over your kitchen floor. I know. So you have to put an extra bag in an extra bag and then put it in a green bag. So that doubles the amount of plastic going into the landfills. Last thing, I think it's not, you know, I am a farmer and we have. Used bail wrap on our bales. And I asked the other day at the recycle, I says, can we recycle this plastic? And they said, we don't have a way of doing it. If we could find a way of doing that, it would, I would be willing to do, send that to recycle. And I think there's other farmers in this town that use green, that use. That bail wrap. That would cut down on the amount of stuff going into the trash. Thank you.
Bill Palazzolo, 1555 Hopkinton Road. I have two questions and then a comment. And I would ask Ken, or. Is it an accurate statement to say repealing the bags as they currently are? As the program is currently will have no negative impact on the tax rate of the town. Is that correct?
Either of you can answer.
In terms of the budget that I'll be presenting at some point tonight. Maybe tonight. It, it assumes that we are doing away with green bag requirement.
On the, on the tax rate. Raising it.
There, there is. $30,000 of revenue that has been collected already that's included in there that is reducing the tax rate somewhat.
But it's negligible on the tax rate.
It's less than a penny.
Okay, less than a penny. Thank you. And rescinding the bags will have no negative effect on the transfer station. That's budgeted completely different, correct? All salaries, all trucks.
Correct. But as Thomas said, if we wanted to go to enforcement, it might require hiring another position.
Okay, but there's no negative effects from, on the transfer station as it stands.
Yeah, that's correct. There's no, there's no change or negative effects to the transfer station.
Thank you. I'm a big supporter of repealing the pay by bag program. I want to thank the select board for also unanimously supporting the repeal. As we all know, our property taxes are a huge burden in this town, but it adds an insult to injury. When on top of the high taxes, we cannot use the transfer station, which our taxes pay for without an arbitrary fee attached. I believe Warren Article 12 is the only article, either school or town this year, that will actually save citizens money. I encourage everyone to vote yes on Article 12. Thank you.
Go and kill him 41 with land drive. I have a question. Where does the trash from the transfer station go when it leaves there? Does it go to a landfill or to an incinerator?
It goes to a landfill in Rochester.
Thank you.
It's me, Rick, again. So I have a question for the board because I've heard different stories and we're here to gather truthful information. So I'm asking you professionals to answer. A question I've heard different things about, and that has to do with the recycling program. Because I kind of like the environment myself, being a solar installer and such. My understanding is that. Over time, a lot of the recycle stuff has ended up in the hopper because it costs more money. To recycle it than it does to throw it in the hopper and the town. For a while was only recycling stuff where it enhanced the tax base. So some of the items that we all diligently put in the bins actually went into the hopper. Does anybody know any answer to that? Is that a true story or is that fiction?
Yeah. Yeah. So the, the rates that we receive for recyclable material varies a lot. We used to get much higher rates. There are certain times when there are issues, there are dramatic costs. And during those times, and some, some portions of that recycling does go into the hopper. That is not the majority of the case. So I don't want to say it never happens. The majority of the case, we do recycle all the material. That being said, throughout this entire process, we also were able to work with the NR, NRA. NRA, thank you. And they were able to do a full cost accounting of all of our different waste streams, looking at what we put into the hopper, what we. What we recycle and then all of those different recycling portions. Some of those things we do make money from scrap metal, for example, some of those things we do not make any money for. And some of those things actually cost more money than putting into the hopper. So it varies across what we want to recycle. But I, I definitely feel like it is always worth recycling as much as we can regardless of the cost. But the, the end story is over time, those, those prices change. And so a lot of different things happen.
Thank you. That's, I just wanted a truthful answer to that and I now have it. And the good news is everything that goes into the recycle bins that may go into the hopper does not require a green bag thereby helping the environment. Thank you.
I'd just like to add to Thomas's correct comments that in the budget that I'll be presenting later. We're assuming that we're going to be getting $50,000 in revenue from recycling.
Amelia Feudner, 277 Timewood Drive. I have a question. And maybe I'm just not knowledgeable enough, but why does Webster not have to use the bags? And why do we have to use them? Or well, I mean, as voted upon.
Thomas, do you want to take that?
So in the joint transfer station agreement, in the actual ordinance that sets kind of the rules for the transfer station. The two towns have to agree on any of those changes. So when it came to implementing the green bags, the two towns couldn't come to an agreement for that. And so Hopkinton put in place a separate pay by bag ordinance that only applies to Hopkinton residents.
Hmm, yeah, okay. Thank you. Hold up one second.
Hold up.
Okay. Ms. Christie, you were not in line when the question was just called. Oh, was she? Okay. Okay, just making sure. Who, where did the call come from? Alright, is there a second? Right, cool. Okay. So to be clear, anyone who was standing or sitting or waiting in line. Will be able to speak if the question is called. We've done this before. Please don't scream into the mic, Mr. Lapri. I see you. I see you. You're a troublemaker.
I wouldn't dream of it.
Steve, can you just shut it off to be really double sure? Alright. So we are voting on whether or not to call the question. If you would like to call the question, which means that only the people in line would be able to speak further on this article. You will say aye. If you would like to allow debate to continue on the article, you will say nay. Everyone understand what we're voting on. Yes. Is there anyone in the overflow room? Who wants to come vote? Anyone been in there recently? Chief Hennessy is gonna go check. In the interim, I have news. I'll give you the results for Article 5. As a reminder, this was the green ballot on the. Waste water asset management bond. With 448 voting in the affirmative and 36 votes in the negative. The article passes with 93% of the vote. Again, Article 5 passes 93% of the vote. I'll recognize a motion from Mr. Whitley. Or anyone else with the mic.
This is my thing. Move to restrict reconsideration of Article 5.
Alright. I'm looking to see if Chief Hennessy has returned to say whether or not there's anyone in the room. Does anyone want to second Mr. Whitley's motion? Seconded by Jeff Donahoe. We're good. Okay. So all the voters are here. If you would like to vote yes on restricting. Oh, that was not a we're good. That's a there's one person. Please hold. Personal escort from the police chief. I hear those things are up for auction at the PTA. Everybody like just applaud when this voter comes in. It'll really throw them off. Alright. So here we go. Alright. Things might have changed since you came down the stairs. Right now, we're voting on a motion to restrict reconsideration on Article 5. Okay. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and reconsideration is restricted. Now we're gonna vote on whether or not to call the question on Article 12. The rescind pay by bag and discontinue special revenue fund article. All those in favor of calling the question say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and the remaining speakers, Mr. Lapri and Ms. Christie will give their remarks and then we will go into the voting mode.
I'm Bob Lapri, Highland Ave. I was involved with the pay by bag program implementation way back when. And from the beginning, it was pretty much a flawed concept, particularly with the Webster residents not participating. But in the interim or since then. It's, it has proven to, to have some effect on reducing our waste stream. But we have a real problem with non-compliance. I think anybody who's gone out to the transfer station has seen that plenty of times. People with, even with Hopkinton stickers coming with the black bags. Anyway, if we choose to keep the program. The black or the green bags will probably have to go up in price because our tipping fees, we were set those back in 2010. At, we were, our tipping fee was like 20, $25 a ton. Now it's well over $100 a ton. So it costs money to get rid of all this stuff. The idea with the green bags is that you'll separate and, and it'll put less into the main waste stream. And we can possibly get some income from the recycling revenues. So if we implemented. Good enforcement or compliance. And required Webster to become a full participant in the program. It would probably work pretty well to reduce our costs for transferring trash to the landfill. So I would certainly. Wish that the town would continue it and implement it properly, not just say, okay, we'll do it the way we have been with, which is ineffective. So that, and I would like to offer an amendment. To the last sentence of this. Motion said, said funds with accumulated interest to date of withdrawal are to be transferred to the. Transfer station. Pollution mitigation fund. I'm thinking in terms of the 10 foot. Chain link fence along the stream because we're just blowing all sorts of trash into that. And that'd be a good way to pay for it rather than just going in.
Can you clarify again what you want to change that to?
I want to change said funds with accumulated interest dated withdrawal are to be transferred to the. Transfer station general fund. For use in. Pollution mitigation.
Okay, I have written down. That you would like to change after transferred to, just make sure I got you right. This transfer station general fund for root use and pollution mitigation.
Correct.
Okay, I am looking at our town administrator and town council to see if that amendment is in order.
Is that gonna fly?
There's a, I don't know what that means yet.
The idea is that if this is rescinded, then the money that's left over will go into pollution mitigation.
I 100% understand your sentiment. And we'll let the lawyer decide the legal things. No pressure. He says. Yes, I do. Here you go.
So to go into the special, which one is it? To go into the transfer station general fund, typically there would need to be an appropriation. If you are amending this article to add an appropriation, you're adding appropriation that wasn't on here previously. So in my view. You, you can't do it.
So let me clarify my understanding of legal counsel's. Assessment. That it would be an improper and illegal amendment that DRA would say, no, this doesn't fly. However, voters can still vote on amendment that would not pass legal muster. Correct? Neil, chime in. With the mic on.
I, I just want to note that there is an article which we would have done first had we not gone out of order. That appropriates the set amount, I will go back and look. That does offset costs at the transfer station, which is the money in the fund. Largely what will be remaining is any residual that comes in at the end and if there was interest accumulated. So we're not talking a significant amount of money. Most of that will be moved when, if, if you approve the article, otherwise. It would all go there.
So essentially it's gonna go into the general fund and it'll be up to the select board to appropriate it. For say pollution mitigation. Is that correct?
Repeat, Neil.
So when you vote, if you vote on the other article, which moves the money, I believe it's $30,000. That will go to the transfer station to offset transfer station costs. When you close this fund, the residual. When you close this fund, the residual of any fund you close has to go somewhere, and you have to put it into, into the general fund, which means it's revenue, it would be part of the fund balance. We're not talking significant money because most of it will already be gone. It's just that the interest, and the interest isn't very big, not very much money, as well as any sort of remaining bag revenue that comes in between now and April 1st.
So essentially, there is some earmarked funds for the transfer station budget, and theoretically could be used for that mitigation that I'm talking about. All right, well then, I guess I'll withdraw my amendment.
Okay. The amendment has been withdrawn. I believe we have one speaker after Mr. Lapree. Mr. Dunlap, do you need a cough drop? I have a whole bag. Good?
My name is Bonnie Christie. I live at 302 Smithfield Road in Kentuckahoe Village. I'm speaking against Article 12 to rescind the pay by bag program. And I find that it's really discouraging to have a warrant article that would remove the only program this town has to reduce our waste. That's pay by bag. And that program reduces the amount of waste that we send to the landfill to be buried or to an incinerator to be burned. This really is not about bags. It's not about how you feel about bags or enforcement. It's about the overall issue of how are we gonna reduce the waste we send to the landfill? That's the whole purpose. People ask, did the green bags do what they were meant to do? And to my knowledge, never run the numbers on that until we did that. And the numbers show that in the first seven years of the green bag program, when revenue was strong, and it seemed to be implemented as it was meant to be... Same was true. Revenue was strong, and the same was true for the amount of waste that we recycled. Recycling went up, revenue went up. Beginning in the eighth year of the program, when things started to fall apart, the revenue from green bags started to fall dramatically, and the amount of waste we were sending to landfill also rose in response to that. Correspondingly, the waste, we can see that the conclusion is that things were improving when we were implementing the green bag program, and things regressed as soon as it started to fall off. And the numbers bear that out. The numbers are not biased, they're just the numbers. Over the course of the program from 2010 to 2024, we took in over $70,000 a year in sales of green bags. And this enabled us, over the same period of time, 2010 to 2024, to appropriate $1,232,451 to offset the expenses of running the transfer station. And that in turn reduced the need to raise taxes for those expenses. Likewise, because the green bags encourage recycling, the tons of waste that we kept out of the landfill increased when the program was strong. And when the program began to fall off, we began to send more waste to the landfill, which costs us more. So we can see that the program was doing what it was meant to do when, sorry, was meant to do, it was doing what it should have been done.
Three minutes, thank you.
The diversion of the program, the diversion program worked, and without the diversion program, we'll see the opposite. Because it also increased the amount of recycling over that period of time.
Ms. Christie, we're not gonna filibuster. Everyone else has followed the three-minute guidance.
$2,102,700.
Ms. Christie, so make me use my mom voice, please, okay? I don't like using this gavel. Let's have courteous respect for everybody here.
Nobody's ever run the numbers, but if anybody wants to see them, they're all here.
Thank you. All right. That being the last comment, we'll move into the voting mode. This will be a voice vote. As a reminder, we're voting on Article 12 to rescind the pay by bag and discontinue special revenue fund. All those who want to vote yes, you're gonna say aye. If you want to keep the pay by program, you're gonna say no. Everyone understand? Thumbs up, hands up if you don't understand. Great. All of Article 12, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and Article 12 is adopted. Mr. Lapree would like a show of hands. Does anyone wanna vote on that motion?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Whitley.
I'd like to move to restrict reconsideration of Article 12.
So moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Jeff Donahue. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article 12, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the article has been restricted for reconsideration. With that, I would like to announce that there are two minutes left for the Article Six SB2 ballot voting. If you have not yet cast your ballot, you may come forward to do that at this time. I would ask that the ballot counters come forward and get ready to count those ballots. Y'all, Mr. Trump has given his last operating budget presentation. I can't believe you're leaving for this, but we'll be live streaming if you wanna tune in at home. Apologies. Mr. Watson, all right. Article Seven, the operating budget. The motion is made by Ken Trump and seconded by Sabrina Dunlap. The chair is honored to recognize Ken Trump one last time.
Thank you, Moderator Persino. I move that the town raise and appropriate, the budget committee recommended some of $10,4,553 for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. And I'm going to try to have some brevity in my comments based on the hour. The budget is a spending plan. The budget and warrant articles are a plan for spending for 2025, but they are really part of a larger plan, including what has already happened and what is planned to happen in the future. That is why we have a 20-year capital expenditure plan. The select board goals for the 2025 portion of the bigger plan include at least maintaining the current level of service, doing it more efficiently, maintaining our well-qualified staff, and meeting our substantial capital needs in a way that doesn't unduly burden taxpayers now or in the future. So going quickly through the process, which is similar to prior years, it started back in August with the department heads creating their budgets, then meeting with the town administrator.
I, I can't hear you. I can bring a mic to you, or you can... Oh, thank you. Technical difficulties. It probably went to sleep. Yay! Good job. Continue.
Where did it die out? So, should I go back?
Just restart from the whole beginning, Ken. I'm just kidding, you guys. I'm just kidding.
Oh, I'll, I'll start with the budget process to date. Going quickly through the process, which is similar to prior years, it started back in August with the department heads creating their budgets, then meeting with the town administrator and finance director, then the select board, including the Webster Select Board as it relates to the transfer station.
Ken, just speak a little louder.
Then to the budget committee, all of the time trying to balance the needs of the town and affordability to our taxpayers. The budget being presented has been unanimously recommended for approval by the select board and the budget committee. So looking at the projected revenues, the operating revenue, including sewer fund revenue, is projected to be $4,375,600, an increase of about $135,000, or 3.18% over 2024. There, the main drivers are, due to the new transfer station fee increase, revenue from commercial haulers, disposal fees, additional revenues from recycling, less revenues from green bags, results in $67,000 in additional revenues. Sale of tax-deeded property is increasing $45,000, and there's a housing grant for $43,750, which is also an expense in the operating budget for a zero net bottom line impact. The operating budget being proposed now is $10,4,553, including sewer costs. It's a 2.65%, or $257,805 higher than 2024. The major changes in the operating budget are $95,509 for a 3% merit wage pool for our very deserving town employees. Remember, we don't have a union. Health insurance in a reserve for health insurance deductibles totaling $49,257, which is about a 5% increase in total. This is lower than other years due to a deductible option provided employees in 2024 that most took advantage of. An expense related to a housing grant of $43,700, which is fully offset by grant revenues. Highway shimming and paving, as in prior years, is increasing about 5%, or $27,500. Engineering costs related to the transfer station lagoons is down $50,000 due to encumbrances from the 2023 budget. And long-term bond principal and interest payments are down a combined $30,000. All other changes were below $20,000. Terms of the use of the fund balance, recognizing that the amount of the fund balance used reduces what has to be raised through taxes, we are proposing to use $350,000, which is $10,000 less than was used in 2023 and estimated for use at town meeting in 2024. So if this budget and all of the recommended warrant articles are approved, the amount to be raised by taxes is $6,973,953, which is a 2.54% increase. This equates to a 13-cent increase in the town portion of the tax rate. On a $500,000 home, the increase equates to $65 a year.
Thank you, Ken. I will now recognize Budget Committee Chair Krista Scurra to speak for the Budget Committee.
Do I need to grab the clicker, or can I say next slide?
I think you should make Neil do it.
Okay. Thank you, Neil. This is fine. Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm Krista. I live over in Clement Hill with my kids and a husband and a little farm. You probably heard from me at the school meeting the other day, so I too will try to keep these comments very brief in light of the time. I do want to thank the school board, select board, and precincts for a very collaborative year, and thank you all for being here so late tonight. It's very cool to participate in this democracy together. So what is the Budget Committee? The Budget Committee is comprised of 10 members, six at large, and four from the different governing bodies. We meet year-round. Off-cycle, we focus on gaining more information that affects the town. In the fall, it's budget season. We receive and evaluate the budgets before voting on them and bringing them to voters at these meetings. We often get asked if it's our budget, or the schools', or the town's'. In a way, it is both. The Budget Committee approves the bottom-line budgets, or the total number, to bring them here tonight. Ultimately, how the money gets spent is up to the respective governing bodies and departments. We do not hire people or set policies. But most importantly, in my view, we are the only entity responsible for looking across all the budgets and warrant articles, which means thinking about how to have excellent schools and excellent town services, as well as thinking carefully about the tax rate. So what do we consider? This year, we evaluated and debated relevant indices such as the Consumer Price Index and Municipal Costs Index. We think about how those indices, how those indices relate to household purchasing power of households in this town, and nationwide increases in municipal expenses. We discussed and asked questions about factors that have large impacts on the schools in town, many of which you heard about here or at school meetings, such as the townwide evaluation, so the sludge and lagoon projects, as well as lead assessments and removals, water system improvements, and special education increases. As I noted before, a key charter of the Budget Committee is to look across budgets and articles at the all-up tax impact. The figures on this slide and in the handout spreadsheet on the table when you walked in do just that. They provide the all-up tax impacts. This year's budget season was not easy. There was consensus in the committee that the town, school, and precincts did a very good job proposing very reasonable budgets, even in inflationary environment. So on the left-hand side of the spreadsheet, you see the current tax rate. In the middle, you'll see the changes. And then on the right-hand side, you will see the new tax rates. These are broken down by governing body and include the budgets and all warrant articles. That is the reason why they, these numbers don't probably line up exactly to what you saw from Ken, because these include, again, all the operating budgets and warrant articles, if passed, not just the operating budget or just the warrant articles. The total change for the schools is 7.99%, and the total change for the town is 2.54%. You can also see the estimated impacts from the state swept and county tax, which are out of our direct control. Added together, this results in a total nominal, nominal increase to the tax rate of $1.31, or about 5.98%. The new total tax rate is in the bottom right at $23.21 per $1,000 in home value. The Budget Committee voted unanimously to bring the operating budget and warrant articles to today's meeting. The town's operating budget increase is modest and respectful of the effects to the tax rate, while still allowing departments in this town to provide excellent services. I think we lost the...
It's very tired. I'm sorry.
Me too.
We'll keep trying to get it back.
Also, I got a text that my kids won't fall asleep without me there.
That's wicked rude. I'm so sorry.
I know.
No one's texted me that.
It's hard to speak to my next point without it in front of you, but I will try to do so, again, because of the time. So if you did grab the spreadsheet, you will see a section of it that looks on, looks at impacts on a $200,000 property, a $400,000 property, and a $600,000 property. You'll see the current tax rates, the dollar increases, and the total tax bill for that property, if everything were to pass. So, again, speaking to it, but I realize it would be easier if it was up here. If you have the spreadsheet in your hand, you'll know what I'm saying. You will see that for a $400,000 property, at the current tax rate, the bill would be about $8,000, $8,756. The dollar increase would be about $528. And the new bill, if, again, everything between the school and the town passes, would be about $9,284. So I hope this information was helpful for you tonight and helps you make your decision. Again, the committee is trying to be responsive to the town in asking that we do this all-up assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. With those remarks, I will now open it up to the floor. As another reminder, just step to the mic, say your name, address, and try to practice the three-minute rule.
My name is Mike Barwell, 91 Maple Street in Kentuckahoe. I gave a similar speech at the school board meeting the other day. I commend, Madam Speaker, the work you've done in the select board, the town committee, town budget committee. You're doing a great job.
I did nothing, to be clear.
Well, you're doing a great job. I have to rise in opposition to this budget. And the only reason I'm opposed to the budget is because of the tax burden on the average resident. I'm a strong proponent of good government at all levels, providing the best opportunities and services for the majority of its citizens. What I object to in New Hampshire is its method of taxation. I know we can't solve that problem tonight. I know we have to vote on a budget. I'm assuming the budget will pass. But I'm gonna vote no. And the only reason I'm voting no is because I have to have a single voice that says... And the only reason I'm voting no is because I have to have a single voice that says we cannot continue to sustain an unsustainable system of taxation. It just doesn't work. You're putting people out of their homes. You're putting people out of the ability to remain in this town. And I think I would charge you, as a Budget Committee and as our elected officials, to take this note upwards. The state is busy downshifting its costs to us. My taxes have almost doubled in fifteen years. This is not workable. So I would take these, our voice, and say, no more. Until we start voting budgets down, until we start saying no as citizens, we can't do anything to stop the carnage. Thank you.
Are there any additional speakers or questioners on the article? I'm sorry, the slide isn't up. Does everyone remember what we're voting on? Seeing no questions, I'm gonna move into the voting mode. All right, this will be a voice vote. If you are in favor of Article VII, the operating budget, you will say aye. If you are opposed, you will say nay. Everybody ready? All right, all those in favor of Article VII, the operating budget, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the article passes. I'll recognize Stephen Whitley for a motion.
Make a motion to restrict reconsideration of Article VII.
All right, so moved. Is there a second? I'll give Mr. Trump this one. All right. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article VII, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the article is restricted for reconsideration. Before we move to Article VIII, I do have results from the secret ballot vote on Article VI. As a reminder, this was the petition warrant article on SB II. With one hundred and seventy-three voting yes and three hundred and sixty-four voting no, the article fails. That is 32% of the yes vote, which is not enough to pass. I will accept a motion from Mr. Whitley.
Motion to restrict reconsideration of Article VI.
So moved. Is there a second? Mr. Trump. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article VI, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and reconsideration is restricted. We will now move to Article VIII, appropriation to Capital Reserves Fund. The motion is made by Ken Trump and seconded by Stephen Whitley. The chair recognizes Ken Trump for a motion.
Okay, Moderator Persino, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of one million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand to be added to previously established capital reserve funds as follows. Replacement and equipping of ambulance seventy-five thousand. Fire department vehicle and equipment acquisitions, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Police vehicle replacement, fifty-six thousand. Police fire radio replacement, five thousand. Revaluation, nine thousand. New and replacement equipment and vehicles for public works and highway departments, three hundred and sixteen thousand. Road and bridge rehabilitation, three hundred and fifty thousand. Sewer equipments, sludge removal, two hundred thousand. Transfer station equipment and facilities, forty thousand. Recreation facilities, eighty thousand. For a total of one million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand. Following our long-established twenty-year expenditure plan, and with the great assistance of the CIP Committee, we are proposing one million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand to go into the capital reserve funds in 2025, an increase of two hundred and twenty-six thousand over 2024. The largest single driver is three hundred and fifty thousand to the road and bridge CRF to help maintain roads as they are repaired, because maintenance is substantially less costly than rebuilding. The majority of these funds will be used in 2026 through 2028 to help cover the estimated costs for repairing the East Pentecost Road Bridge and the Broad Cove Bridge to the tune of 1.4 million. The other major driver is the two hundred thousand for the sludge removal and sewer equipment CRF. This will cover much-needed repairs and upgrades at the pump station in Riverside Park. And when I mentioned that the, previously, that the total increase in the tax rate on the town portion is thirteen cents, it includes this warrant article as well as the prior and the next.
Oh, you trailed off at the end.
Yeah, and the thirteen cents includes all of the warrant articles that I'm talking about, the operating budget, the capital reserve funds, and the following article.
All right. Thank you, Ken. With those opening remarks, I'll open it to the floor. Does anybody wish to speak to this article? You're still here. Listen, whoever's here at the end, we're going to take a selfie, and then we're going to rub it in everyone else's face, okay? We'll see how long. All right. Seeing no comments, we will move into the voting mode. All those in favor, it's a voice vote, all those in favor of Article VIII, the appropriation to capital reserve funds, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the article passes. I will recognize Mr. Whitley for a motion.
Move to restrict reconsideration of Article VIII.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Trump. All right, all those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article VIII, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and reconsideration has been restricted. We will move to Article IX, appropriation to expendable trust funds. The motion is made by Ken Trump and seconded by Jeffrey Donahoe. The chair recognizes Ken Trump for a motion.
Hey, Moderator Persino, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred to be added to previously established expendable trust funds as follows. Town facilities, one hundred and five thousand. Recreation facilities, fifty-five hundred. Library technology, three thousand. Library buildings and grounds, five thousand. For a total of one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred. These trust funds are for maintenance of town-owned facilities, including all the buildings and recreation facilities. This is also a fund that replaces the computers at the library.
Thank you, Ken. Would anybody like to speak to this article? Okay, seeing no comment. Are you ready for the vote? Great. All those in favor of Article IX, appropriation to expendable trust funds, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the article carries. I'll recognize Mr. Whitley for a motion.
Move to restrict reconsideration of Article IX.
So moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Trump. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article IX, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and reconsideration is restricted. We will move to Article X, authorization to expend from pay-by-bag special revenue fund. The motion is made by Thomas Lepoma, seconded by Stephen Whitley, and the chair recognizes Thomas Lepoma for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to move the town raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars for the purpose of offsetting the cost of collection and disposal of residential solid waste and such other district costs, direct costs as budgeted annually, with said funds to come from the pay-by-bag special revenue fund, no funds to be raised by taxation.
Do you have any comment?
Yeah, so these are funds that came in from revenue from the sales of green bags last year. They go into this pay-by-bag special revenue fund, and then we vote now to bring them out. So there, this is nothing to do with raising any taxes this year.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Klimarzak.
Okay, I'm going to speak, is what Bob Lepri was trying to talk about a little bit earlier. Right now, up at the transfer station, when we have a windy day, a lot of the recycled paper, cardboard, and stuff gets blown.
I hate to do this. Is your comment specific to this article, or would it be more appropriate at the end under other business?
No, it's, I'm going to make an amendment to this.
Trust you, sir. Okay.
I'm just explaining why I want to put this amendment in. Anyways, we have a lot of trash blowing from the recycling area into Deer Meadow Brook in what Bob Lepri was, had mentioned, and I am saying is that to amend this warrant article to say that offsetting the cost of collection and disposal of residential solid waste, including the installation of a chain-link fence around the area of the Hopper and other such direct costs.
That's a long one. Installation of a chain-link fence. Sorry. Lawyers say no. It wasn't me. You could still make the motion if you want.
I'd like to have an explanation as to why, because it says other direct costs.
I'd ask for our counsel to give you that.
Okay. So a special revenue fund is only, can only be used for the purposes for which it was established. In order to add purposes, you actually would need to amend the purposes of that fund. You can still make the motion. You can still vote on it. It's just not going to be effective.
Thank you. Does that answer your inquiry as to why? The answer, no?
It is disappointing, but I'll accept the attorney's opinion.
We will note that for the record. All right, are there any further comments on Article 10? Nope, seeing none? Oh, thank you. We will wait. Two. Ms. Kimball.
Gail Kimball, 716 Kirasaj Avenue. If we do not pass this article, would the money remain in the trust fund so that we could have a better discussion next year on whether it should be spent on a chain-link fence? Would that be possible?
You have already voted to discontinue this fund, so if you don't transfer it now to offset expenses at the transfer station, it will go to the general fund. So no. This is the way you get it to the general fund, which is what I think Bob was trying to do, get it to the, to the offset transfer costs, which is what he was trying to do before. This does that with this much money.
So there's no way to hold on to this money so we could discuss improvements at the transfer station to protect the... Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment or question? I thought I saw someone else walking. You're good? Okay, great. All right, seeing no further comment or question, we will move into the voting mode. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 10, authorization to expend from pay-by-bag special revenue fund, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the article passes. I'll recognize Mr. Whitley for a motion.
Move to restrict reconsideration of Article 10.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ooh, new one. Okay. Seconded by Thomas Lepoma. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article 10, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and reconsideration is restricted. We will move to Article 11, authorization to expend from senior center special revenue fund. The motion is made by Thomas Lepoma and seconded by Jeffrey Donahoe. The chair recognizes Thomas Lepoma for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'd like to move the town raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand, five hundred dollars for the purpose of offsetting operational and maintenance costs at the Slushers Center, with said funds to come from the Slushers Center Senior Rental Special Revenue Fund, no funds to be raised by taxation. And...
Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I think it's free.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak to his motion? Seeing no comments or questions, we will move into the voting mode. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 11, authorization to expend from senior center rental special revenue fund, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the article carries. I'll recognize Mr. Whitley for a motion.
Move to restrict reconsideration of Article 11.
So moved. Who would like to second? Anybody? I'll give this one to Sabrina Dunlap, you know? Join the fun. All right, all those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article 11, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and reconsideration is restricted. We did Article 12 already. We will go to Article 13, rental of the Bates Building. The motion is made by Thomas Lepoma and seconded by Stephen Whitley. The chair recognizes Thomas Lepoma for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'd like to move that the town authorize the Select Board to lease all or a portion of the Bates Building for a period of up to five years, as determined by the Select Board, and to lease the building at a rate that is in the best interest of the town, which may be at a lower-than-market rate, upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board deemed to be in the best interest of the town.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. So this, the town owns the Bates Building, which was donated to the town. It used, sorry. It used to hold the town clerk. The town clerk was moved to the town hall. At that point, it was an open question as to what we should do with the building, and specifically what we should do with the upper floor of the building. The town still uses the lower floor for storage. There's a vault down there. There's a lot of records down there, so we still actively use that portion of the building. But the upper portion of the building is, is currently being rented out. So the, the Select Board has the authority to enter into one-year lease agreements with someone who might want to lease and rent the space. This creates a bit of a problem, because we're not the best, most active landlords, and so going into negotiations every single year is relatively problematic. It also means that when we try to go out and find someone to, to fill the space, it's relatively difficult. And when we do find someone, like the current occupant, which happens to be a nonprofit, going through those negotiations every single year brings up a bit of confusion on the board as to what our purpose there is, whether or not we're supposed to be maximizing revenue, or whether or not we're supposed to be maximizing some other benefit to the town. So the purpose of this motion is to allow the Select Board to enter into longer-term agreements, and then also take into other factors beyond just money as to how we should be renting out the space.
Thank you. With those opening comments, I will open it to the floor. Seeing no comments, we'll move into the voting mode. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 13, rental of the Bates Building, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the article carries. I'll recognize Mr. Whitley for a motion.
I'm going to restrict reconsideration of Article 13.
You know, you're going to move to restrict reconsideration.
Move to restrict reconsideration of Article 13.
Okay. Would anyone like to second that motion? Seconded by Jeff Donahoe. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article 13, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and reconsideration is restricted. We'll move to Article 14, designating lots as town forests. The motion is made by Sabrina Dunlap, seconded by Ken Trump, and the chair recognizes Sabrina Dunlap for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move the town will vote to designate the following town-owned lots as town forests: Karen's Woods, map lot 228046000, Stony Brook Lane, Parmenter Lot, map slash lot 259029000, Beach Hill Road. So this is, this was a generous donation of land to the town by Dave Dufau with the request that the land be designated as a town forest, and it is named Karen's Woods in honor of his late wife.
All right. Without any further comment from the chair, I see Mr. Klimarzak.
Hi, I'm Ron Klimarzak. I'm Chair of the Conservation Commission. In 2003, the town initiated a program to acquire conservation land or protect land, valuable conservation land around the town. When the crash of 2008 hit, we kind of stopped that program because of the concerns of the effect on the tax rate. However, we've had the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission kind of working together to still keep their land protection program alive. We've been able to protect quite a bit of land at no cost to the taxpayers through federal and state local grants. And every once in a while, we have people will donate land. I knew Karen, and sorry.
Take your time, Ron.
And Dave really wanted this land protected. Also, we had Carol Parmenter. Dave's land is an active woodlot with trails, and he's done logging on it, has a nice wetland. Carol Parmenter felt that her land should be left untouched and allowed to develop into old-growth forest. So we've had two landowners who felt that... I don't know why I get choked up on this, other than I've been doing it all my life, the conservation. Felt that strong enough that these lands should be protected at no cost to the taxpayers, and I'd like to publicly thank both of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Seeing no further comments, we will move into the voting mode. Oh, just kidding. Ms. Morse.
Sorry, Cheryl Morse, 396 Park Avenue. Just curious, what are the size of the lots? How many acres? Any idea? Anybody know?
I bet Mr. Klimarzak knows.
Thank you.
Brittany, do you know?
Do we have that handy, Neil?
And Dave Dufau was about six... And Dave Dufau's was about 68 acres and the Parmenter piece, I believe, is 17 acres.
Thank you, Ron. All right. Seeing no further comments or questions, we'll move into the voting mode. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 14 Designating Lots as Town Forest say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and the article carries. I'll recognize Mr. Whitley for a motion.
Move to restrict reconsideration of Article 14.
So moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Thomas Lepoma. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article 14 say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and reconsideration is restricted. Move to Article 15 Authorization to Sell Land. The motion is made by Sabrina Dunlap and seconded by Stephen Whitley. The chair recognizes Sabrina Dunlap for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move the town will vote to authorize the select board to sell the 6.099 acre landlocked property identified on the town of Hopkin and tax maps as map slash lot 208099022 located off Clement Hill Road owned by the town two and a butter for merger with an existing lot. Further, that the select board shall be authorized to sell the lot upon such terms and conditions which they deem to be in the best interest of the town. And there's the lot. It is. This is a parcel that, as you can see, is landlocked. I my understanding is that the Conservation Commission has weighed in on this and is okay with this request. And so this is simply a request to allow the town to consider selling this land. And I'm sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll open it up to the floor.
Okay, Ron Klimarzak again. This was a a house lot that was proposed as part of a large subdivision that was going in. It had a wetland with bog characteristics. And we felt that it would be best to try to protect it from the development. However, the development fell through and it the land as of now is not being developed and we felt that it it no longer needed the protection that we had our original concerns about.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Reserve.
Thank you, Sarah. I got to pick this up because I'm taller. Appreciate it. Dan Reserve, 83 Brookwood Land in Kotookuk. I have a couple of questions on this this property. First of all, why are we selling it? It's I think it's a value of $30,000. It has no tax. I just checked the tax records. There's no tax charge on it. We just put away two pieces of land into protected forest. Why not add this one to it? It's a beautiful area. It's got old growth forest. It's a it's a piece of land that's not bothering anybody. If we sell it to somebody else who has the ability to create a bigger subdivision right there. I I just don't see why we're doing this.
All right. Would anyone from the select board care to respond?
Neil, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is landlocked, so there's no town. There's no passable way in or out to use it as town land. I don't know if anyone from the Conservation Commission wants to weigh in, but it's just a landlocked parcel that's just sitting there. So.
So for a second question, I may. So what what protections will there be on this land? Is this land that will then be developable? The butter, if you look at that, he has such a big or they have such a big piece of land there. Can they put a road through and put more subdivisions there? Why not put this? Just leave it as it is?
I don't want to encourage a back and forth between any of the voters. However, I do think the most knowledgeable person on this topic would be Mr. Klimarzak if he is so willing to come up again.
Can I handle the mic since I've already taken out? Thank you.
Okay. Again, the reason why we originally wanted to protect it because it does have wetlands and we felt that it should be protected, you know, from the development. Wetlands are also protected through the state and state laws and federal laws. So that particular piece, part of the upland area was was suitable for building. But we wanted to kind of protect the whole piece for the wetlands. So yes, if this property is sold, that landowner could you know, could propose a development as any other landowner in town could. But those wetlands, those particular wetlands would not be able to be filled without a permit process or that type of thing. Right now, if he's developing that property, then it would be surrounded in the public use would be even even further restricted. You know, by the butters who would would have houses there. So it'd be nice to protect it if it was the development. But that development was withdrawn and without public access. And having to monitor and manage that land as as the as the town forest would be very difficult.
Thank you. Mr. Reserve, do you have another follow up?
Sorry, I have my last question now. Then first of all, I'm going to ask people to vote against this. I I think we need to look at this more. However, if it is sold, is this already a done deal that it is going to be butter or is this going to be offered to anybody in the area? Thank you.
The article says a butter specifically, so it would have to go to in a butter. I believe there's more than one a butter.
It looks like there are two. Any further questions?
That's it. I will vote against this. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome to get back up in line if you want to again.
Hello?
Yes.
Chamberhead Street 333 Gould Hill Road. I'm on the planning board. And we've been doing a lot of looking at the spaces in town where there can be development that we can perhaps have affordable workforce. Stuff. And certainly there's taxation pressure on our town. And it's very unlikely we'll get a whole lot of commercial development here to augment our tax base. But smaller, affordable housing would be helpful. And if somebody does, this piece of property can add to a I I remember the the subdivision that was going in there. It had 23 lots. And it it through they didn't. They never they never did it because of the cost of a communal water system or some such. But anyway, my I would vote for this. We have a lot of protected land in the town. A huge amount of our town is protected because of the dam. And we haven't got a lot of options to enlarge our tax base. And that's about the only way we'll ever get any tax relief.
Hi, Mark Zankel Crowell Road. I'm curious why why it is that the select board chose to write the warrant article so that it restricts the sale to an a butter rather than purely a sale. And I asked the question because if we wanted to optimize the revenue to the town from the sale of, I guess, what the select board is determined to be a surplus lot. Why would we restrict the buying pool to only to a butters when we could offer it to any universe of buyers who might give us a better chance to?
The the piece is landlocked, so there's no way to get to it if you sell it to someone else. This require this would be sold and then merged with one of those lots, which eliminates a landlocked piece of land.
Thank you.
Follow up? Did you want to follow up? No? Okay. Any other comments or questions? I see someone moving. Ms. Palermo?
Hi. Yep, Sarah Palermo, Park Ave. I was wondering if we could get some sense of whether there are town protections for wetlands. Just in case some of the others might be undone.
I understand your question. Is there anyone on the board who'd like to speak to that hypothetically?
I believe it's all state at the moment. And Ron's shaking his head yes, so that's the correct answer.
Okay. Next speaker.
Krista Helmbold, Hedros Lane. And I'm just curious to know if there's been any consideration of any sort of deed restriction on the sale that would protect against some of the worst case scenarios that have been put forth as possibilities in the future.
If anyone likes to respond?
I believe that is something that has been discussed and could happen.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move into the voting mode. All those in favor of Article 15 Authorization to Sell Land say aye. All those opposed say nay. Okay, we're going to do this one more time. Don't scream into a microphone. Steve, please shut it off. Do speak clearly. All those in favor of Article 15 Authorization to Sell Land say aye. All those opposed say nay. Think it was nay, but we're gonna we're gonna do the hand vote again, y'all, because I'm not ready to leave. Okay? I need my ballot counters. Who's left? Once again, if you are sitting in the middle of a row, pick aside, any side. There you go, Mr. Strack. You know the ropes. Where are my assistant moderators? You tell everybody where to go. If there's anybody sitting in the overflow room, because those chairs are more comfortable, please come down. If all of the ballot counting pairs go back to where you were for the first hand vote, that would be great. If anyone has lost their partner because it's just so early in the evening, raise your hand and I'll send you an assistant moderator. All right. I think Beth needs a friend. Oh, she is? Oh. I didn't even see her. I'm so sorry, Alita. So sorry. You weren't standing next to each other. All right. So as a reminder, just raise your hand, one hand, only one. Okay? If you are in favor of Article 15 Authorization to Sell Land, please raise your hand. Keep it raised until I tell you to put it down. Got you. Where's Thomas? Are you intentionally? Okay. All right, ballot counters. Once you've counted these, just look at me. Perfect. Well done. Are you are you looking at me, Beth? Okay. Elizabeth Norm, you good? Okay. And Nancy Jo, Tricia, you good? All right. This half of the room, put your hand down. All right, Debbie, Natalie are good. Mark and Cheryl, you good? Catherine, Erin, you good? Okay, everybody put your hand down. Now, if you are opposed to Article 15 and you would like to vote nay, raise your hand and keep it raised until I tell you to put it down. Thank you. All right, Beth, Alita, good? All right, everybody put your hands down. Ballot counters, come report your vote. Thank you. You sure you don't want to cough up? You got choices. You can have a honey, it's giving a lot of things, or maple syrup candies from, you know, him. What ones do you like better? Yeah, you better hydrate and get your voice right. All right. Thank you all for your patience and your participation. With 97 yes votes and 76 no votes, the article carries. That was the saddest applause I've ever heard. Okay. Just writing down the numbers. Okay. We'll move to Article 16. Article 16 To Rescind You would like to make a motion? Oh, Mr. Whitley's not here, sitting. I didn't know. Okay, Mr. Whitley, get over here. On your feet, lose your vote.
Move to restrict Article 15? 15. Thank you. Restrict reconsideration of Article 15.
So moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Thomas Lepoma. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article 15 say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and reconsideration is restricted. All right, Article 16. To rescind the select board authority to accept dedicated streets. This is a petition warrant article. The motion is made by Dick McIntyre. And seconded by Mr. Myler. Can you remind me of your address, Mr. Myler? He moved. I can't keep track. 101 Smithfield. All right. Thank you, Mel. And I, the chair, will recognize the petitioner, Dick McIntyre, for a motion.
I can make a motion to rescind the authority to accept dedicated streets that was granted to the select board in 1994 per RSA 67440 and to return this authority to the voters at town meeting.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. I'm I'm sorry. Thank you. In 1994, town residents voted to give the select board the final authority to accept new streets and roads in Hopkinton. This replaced what had been the direct voting process by town residents at town meeting in previous years. This warrant article seeks to return that approval authority to the voters. This would apply only to new streets and roads and upgrades from unmaintained class six roads to town maintained class five roads, not to developments with frontage on existing roads. Right now, after the planning board goes through, gives approval to accept a new street or a class five upgrade, the consideration can be moved from the planning board to the select board. The select board reviews the accepted proposal and votes on whether or not to approve the recommendation of the planning board for a new street or upgrade. And the process is completed. At that point, the ownership, cost, and maintenance of that new street becomes the ongoing responsibility of the taxpayers in town and added to the list of annual expenses. As significant zoning changes are proposed by the the planning board and likely forthcoming housing committee, there's a growing effort to promote increased development in town. And due to people's other commitments and busy schedules, public hearings at planning board and select board meetings are generally sparsely attended. This article will return to the voters a direct opportunity to weigh in on some of the issues of rapid development, the costs associated with it, and unforeseen complications, including discussions on environmental impact. There is noticeable concern about the widespread spikes in town property taxes. It makes sense to return the decision regarding accepting the additional tax burden of maintaining new roads directly to the residents. Two years ago, we voted to approve a $2 million bond to repair a portion of Briar Hill Road. Minutes of the Select Board meeting at the time indicate that we still have $20 million worth of repairs that need to be done, including 22 roads that need rebuilding due primarily to deferred maintenance over the past 30 years. The recommendation was to increase spending on road maintenance going forward. Road maintenance has been one of the driving forces behind budget expenditures in the town portion of the budget. In the 2024 Town Report from last year, the Select Board indicates that, quote, "The significant focus of the town budget continues to be the condition of the town's roads, many of which still need significant repair. Adding new roads or upgrading Class 6 roads to Class 5 roads inherently adds to that tax burden." So, under our current process, about a dozen people have the authority to designate and accept new streets. This involves committing to future ongoing expenses. Again, a decision that should rightly be made by taxpayers, much as current spending is at town meeting, by a vote of the people. Rather than a small number of people voting, the townspeople should vote directly on these potentially significant costs that create continuing environmental challenges and possible changes to the rural character of our town.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. With that, I'll open it to the floor. Oh, just kidding. Throwing you off your toes. I'm going to recognize Mr. Lipoma first.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. So, just first, I want to clarify one thing. This warrant article does not change any of the authority of the Select Board to change or modify Class 6 roads into Class 5 roads. What this RSA does is only for accepting laid-out roads through the planning process. So, the purpose... The purpose of this RSA is to make a more consistent pathway for development to go through the planning board. So, if there is a parcel of property that wants to be subdivided, it can go to the planning board, and then from that, they can decide on how they want to lay out the road. Then it comes to the Select Board, decide if they're going to accept that road, and then that development can be built. The problem without this is that pathway then has to wait at least a year to go through the town meeting as well, which creates a lot of confusion for developers. It inhibits the developer's ability to move forward. So, looking at what the path... The path actually is for a road like this. First, a developer would come and decide what they want to do. They would have a planning board review. The planning board would take input from police, fire, DPW. The planning board would then have their public hearing. There would be a layout of what the road would look like. Then, I actually have this last bit mixed up. The Select Board would have its public hearing. Then, once the road and development is actually made, it would be inspected by DPW to make sure that it met the standards specified by the planning board, and then the Select Board would vote to accept the road. So, through this process, there are many different parts where public input is taken. So, looking back from 1994 to now, there's been nine roads that have been accepted through this process. I didn't put all nine up here. I've just put these three, but in general, they all look exactly like this. So, in... What this RSA does is create, at least in the last 20 years, what this RSA has done is create these types of developments. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about this, what this doesn't do. This does not change the authority of the Select Board to convert Class 6 roads into Class 5 roads. It does not change our ability to approve building permits on Class 6 roads. And it doesn't change the ability to make private roads. Private roads are kind of a different thing. They're more a legacy thing. I don't really think there's a pathway for it for private roads, but it doesn't change that. And so, I just also think it's worth noting, because there was a couple of comments about Class 6 roads. I think it's worth noting what's come up before the Select Board over the last several years about Class 6 roads. So, over my five years, I think we've seen the same number, about five petitions from residents to either get building permits or convert Class 6 roads to Class 5 roads. There hasn't been any conversion. The Select Board hasn't done anything with that. And one thing that we did do is we formed a Class 6 Roads Committee. And during that committee, we went and evaluated every single Class 6 road in town. We looked at... We actually went out, did site visits, looked at the roads, and then made evaluations and recommendations as to what should happen with those roads. One of those roads, it was recommended to turn into a Class A trail, which then did come to the town meeting and was converted to a Class A trail. And there are no roads that the Select Board recommended converting from a Class 6 to a Class 5.
And with that comment, I will open it up to the floor. Mr. Dappas, I see you first.
Thank you. I'm Rob Dappas. I live on Woodwells Garrison, and I'm opposed to this article. I think this action would basically being... Would be saying no to all development and all subdivisions in town, because no homebuilder is going to buy a piece of property, put in the investment to do the engineering and design to build something there, and then sort of roll the dice on whether the town meeting is going to let them build a road that the town would then accept. There's currently no pathway for them to build a private road, as Tom sort of alluded to there. And I understand there's anxiety around housing. I guess what I would say is there's a lot of good people with all kinds of different perspectives, representing different demographics in town, trying to figure out what we should do about housing. We definitely have a housing affordability problem in the state and in the town, and the town has a role in figuring out how we can play a part in solving that while still preserving what we love about Hopkinton. And an action like this would really kind of interrupt and disrupt those good efforts. So, I hope people will participate in those conversations, and I think we'll get to some good solutions that will be brought, of course, before the voters. But I think this would be really counterproductive to those efforts and counterproductive to efforts to make Hopkinton, you know, a place where all people can sort of live, thrive, agent place, things like that. And I would just lastly say, Tom showed us a couple of the roads that have been adopted by the town in the last 30 or so years, and I think you probably know some people who live on some of those roads, on West Ridge Circle or Granite Valley. You know, it's hard for me to imagine somebody who's been in town for, you know, more than five minutes and knows some of the folks who live on those roads, thinking that the existence of those roads has not contributed to the community. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Carr?
Byron Carr, Burnham Middleville Road. I spoke with one of the people that signed this warrant by signing, and they said that they wanted this to prevent a development near their house. That's not the way to make laws. The planning board and the Select Board, I've been to lots of their meetings, and they do a great job of considering public input. If you can't make it, you can write to them. I've seen this done lots of times, and they listen to the people that come and comment both sides and make fair decisions from most of the ones I've seen. So, I think you should vote no on this. It's just not a good article.
Okay. I hear that there's a call to the question. I see two people in line. Was anyone seated behind who wanted to speak but couldn't stand? No? Okay. There's two people in line, Luis and Ian. I am going to put it to the voters. If you would like to call the question and end debate after these two speakers, you would say aye. If you do not want to call the question and you would like debate to continue, you will say nay. Everyone ready? All those in favor of calling the question, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We will let these final two speakers go, and then we'll move to the voting mode.
Luis Carr, Burnham Middleville Road, asking, urging everyone to use common sense and vote no on this. I just want to remind some people of been around town just for a couple of minutes. And back in '89, there was a similar petition warrant article on Kearsage Ave., and they took our M1 land that was closest to Exit 7, that end of Kearsage, and turned it back into our 4, so residential. And then two developments came, and the same people came to the planning board and wanted to not have that development, because they didn't want any development. So, wouldn't people... And we also did the same thing on Maple Street. A petition warrant article came. They wanted... They took the, again, another section of our M1 section and want it residential. This is doing the same thing. It's not good business for the town of Hopkinton. It's only benefiting the certain property owners that brought this forward. If this is a nimble, you know, not my backyard, this is not in the benefit of a whole town of Hopkinton. We need to expand our tax base. We need to allow some development. If you're concerned about development, you can go onto the planning board, ask to have their agendas sent to you. You do not have to be in a butter. You can go to those meetings. I've gone to many. If I'd had a concern about something, I've been allowed to express my concerns, and they pay attention, and they have actually... Some of my suggestions have been written into the stipulations. So, if you're concerned about something, just go and speak. This is not the way to do it. You do not stop things' progress from happening. So, I'm hoping common sense will prevail. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Good evening. Ian Hart, Hatfield Road. I'd also like to urge no on this. I've been serving on the town's Economic Development Committee for three years. In that time, the committee has worked very hard to try to fulfill its work to support the businesses we have, help them grow, and attract new businesses to town. It is very hard work, as you can imagine, but the intent is to help diversify the tax base and add more business tax increment to town. We already have one hand tied behind our backs in the work that the town is doing, and that effect, that I feel like this will just only make things harder. Thank you.
All right. With all the comments closed, I will put this in the voting mode. All those in favor of Article 16, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it. The article fails. I will recognize Mr. Whitley for a motion.
Move to restrict reconsideration of Article 16.
All right. Is there a second? Mr. Donahoe seconds. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article 16, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and reconsideration is restricted. We will move to Article 17, Other Legal Business. To transact any other business... Don't clap yet, it's not done. Mr. Houston's at the well. All right. Any other business that may legally come before the meeting? Mr. Houston?
Hi, my name's Rich Houston, 790 Main Street. My plea is for the community to please consider attending planning board meetings, Economic Development Committee meetings, and Housing Committee meetings. Housing is a big, big issue that is being discussed at the state level and at our local level. Things are changing on housing in New Hampshire. Our state is short some 20,000 housing units, or roughly a population the size of Concord when you figure 2.3 people per home. Where are all those new homes, apartments, and condos to be built? Worse, we will be short some 60,000 homes in a decade or so. That's three Concordes. The political folk in Concord have made it a priority to encourage towns like ours to open up our zoning for denser types of housing. Two years ago, our town, through a state grant, hired an urban planner. Since three to eight homes per acre, that's generally the range of affordable homes, three to eight homes per acre, need city utilities like sewer and water service, it was quickly realized that Kentuckuk Village, with those assets already in place, would be really the only place in town to build multifamily apartments, condos, or microhomes affordably. Last summer, some really scary zoning changes were debated that would make Kentuckuk, over time, look more city-ish. I am thankful that our planning board, Economic Development, and Housing Committee chose to send, in their various capacities, last Tuesday on ballot voting day, a much more town-friendly set of zoning changes. But there are forces that will continue to put pressure on Hopkinton to accept urban sprawl in the years to come. As you drive around Park Avenue, Spring Street, Maple Street, Kearsage Avenue, and Main Street in the R1 zone, do you want to see single-family homes or condo and apartment complexes? I urge Hopkinton residents to keep up to date on proposed zoning changes and to talk with the good people who serve on the planning board, who we are lucky to have.
Thank you.
Steve Lux, 413 Little Tucky Road. Just stating for the record, 4,849 registered voters in the town of Hopkinton, 581 attended this meeting tonight, which represents 11.98% of our voting community.
Thank you, Mr. Lux. Any further legal business? Anyone want to take a selfie? No? You just want to get out of here? Yes, let's do it, everybody. Okay, ready? It's going to be great. This is like Ellen style. It's very 2020. Okay, everybody. Gotta go this way. Bye, geez. Okay. Close enough. Some of you were not in it. I'm so sorry. I'll vouch for you if you need credit on Facebook. All right. Seeing no further business, I will conclude by, again, thanking all of the voters so sincerely, our volunteers, election officials, and town employees who made today's town meeting possible. I will accept a motion to adjourn from Ken Chalm, seconded by Thomas Lipoma. Their final one. All those in favor, say aye. All right. This meeting...